All right, if we have a planning commission we need to mortar, please rise for the pledged allegiance.
The nations stood in flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unyielding, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row pop, please.
Edward Keller.
Excellent, excused.
Whitey Simon. Here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Borshardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Newsley.
Yes, and excuse.
Keith Fell.
Here.
And Kathy H. Schweitzer.
Here, thank you. Item number four, amendments to agenda. Hearing none, I will move on to item number five, which is approval of minutes.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2019 planning commission meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item number six is, has new business, public hearing for 73.
May I at this point in time would like to be recused from this portion of the hearing due to my personal feelings of impartiality.
Okay, thank you. The planning commission needs to vote on this, so we need a motion.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion support. Everybody understand?
Yep.
All right, do you want to call help over to that?
Edward Keller excused. Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb here. Harold Bane here. Mark Borshardt here. Tom Cozel here. Robert Newsley. Great.
No, no, no. For the motion.
Oh, for the motion.
Sorry, confusion. Sorry.
Thank you. Motion to.
Recuse.
Motion is to have our newsie recused from.
No, 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 Keith Fell.
Keith. Keith. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, you got me.
I'll slow down, I apologize.
Keith. Motion, aye, and aye. Second. Motion is to recuse for item.
Six A.
Six A.
Public hearing.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Edward Keller. Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yep.
Mark Borshardt.
Yep.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Newsley. And Kathy Schweitzer.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yep. We'll get you when we get passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go back to once. Item six A, public hearing in regards to 71 or 73 17 Dyke Road. I am going to continue with a public hearing at 7:10. And at this particular point, I am going to ask our planners for any presentation they would like to do in regard to this project. Can I stop you for one second? Just so we can lay the ground rules, would you read the rules?
Public hearing, public comment rules. Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the comments are prohibited. Number two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, such as a subdivision, association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you. Okay, Rock.
Can everybody hear me all right from here? Instead of standing in front of the screen, blocking it, I'm trying to do my report from here, hopefully it'll make it a little easier. It just works. I literally worked right before it started. Okay, okay. All right. Okay, we're gonna start off just by going through some aerial photographs to get everybody oriented. I know most people are familiar with this site, but this is a general aerial showing on the location. This is a closer up version. This is a 2019 aerial photograph. This is a 2017. One of the things we've talked about is how the water levels have had an impact on the size of the, what is known as the Penske Island. And you'll see that as we take a look at some of the aerial photographs here. This is from 2014 until this is obviously during the boating season, and get a feel for the boats out in Bouvier Bay. Here's another one from 2011. You can see the size of the island is quite bigger in those particular, in this particular area. And just to familiarize everyone with the zoning, this is zone C3, general business, properties to the north and south are R1. And then there's C3, which is also residential, excuse me, C3 directly east across the creek canal from the subject site, and then on the other side of Dyke Road is R4 residential. Access to this site is proposed from one point of access. It's an existing access to the island that's going to be improved and widened. And this is a drawing from their most recent site plan showing how that's going to be improved to approximately, I believe it's 30 feet wide was the dimension that the improvements are gonna be made for improvements. And if we go back here, we can see that it looks, effectively is a shared drive from appearances and driving by the site with the Rosemarine property. This will define it and make an improvement to the approach through the permits that are going to be ultimately, if approved, issued through MDOT, since this is a state road. This is just a photograph of what it looks like today, what the access is like. Obviously, this is not a commercial level access. This is an older access that's been there for many, many years. So the proposal you have is an application for both special land use and site plan approval. It includes a restaurant with a capacity of 134 people. It includes a transient marina with approximately 133 boats. We'll talk about that in a minute. A future bathhouse, outdoor dining, live entertainment, a pool area. We have a range there. Most of the calculations show 223 people, but there's still a floor plan that shows 456 people, so that's obviously a point of discussion. Event area number one has a capacity of 424. I believe there's also a document that talks about 450, but we believe 424 is the number that is actually being proposed. And then these are the dimensional requirements from the ordinance, setback standards, and the top is for the restaurant, then for event area number one, and then for the future bathhouse. It appears that the setback requirements are going to be met, and although we don't have necessarily all the details on the height of a tent or the future bathhouse, we would expect that those could also and would likely be able to conform with the maximum height. So here's the latest plan that was submitted. One of the things that happened with this most recent submittal is we received three new sheets, full-size sheets, but there was not a complete resubmittal of all the information. So that's a point of information I think we need to talk about in terms of, do you have what you consider to be a complete package of everything that's been submitted and is current up-to-date? We were hoping that the applicant would have provided a complete, full set of information this time around, but we don't have that. So if you're not comfortable with that, you need to have a discussion with the applicant, make sure everybody is on the same page in terms of exactly what's being proposed. There was an eight-and-a-half by 11 version that we did receive of a full set, however, a lot of that was not necessarily legible because of the resolution of the images and the text. So that's a point of information, but I'm not gonna dwell on that right now. I'm gonna get through the information. This is kind of a blow-up of the southeast end, showing the approach coming in to the site, a single approach. This is an enlargement of the restaurant and pool area. There's a pool area, outdoor patio, and you can see some of the improvements that are being made along the shoreline where boats would have the ability to come up along the south shoreline here. And they'll also be able to do that along the east shoreline, we'll get to that in a minute. So this is the floor plan, showing the layout of the restaurant, showing the outdoor area, showing the pool area, showing some outdoor cables and the like. This was provided with the most recent submittal from the applicant in terms of their application from the Army Corps of Engineers. And what they are proposing to do is, and it will depend upon, obviously, the size of boats that come in, but the estimate that has been provided is approximately 133 boats would be berthed along the east and the south side, and that they are proposing to raft, as you can see, boats in four across on the south side and two to three across on the east side. If, to those of you who are familiar with St. Clair County and its Blueways Plan, there are kayak trails that go through this area, one of which runs along the bay, subject sites up here, and then there's also one, the Bodian Creek actually runs right up the east side of the property and heads out here. So these are existing established kayak routes from St. Clair County Blueways. And then this is just a little bit of an enlargement of the Bodian Creek, goes under the bridge, and as I mentioned, goes along the east side of the subject property. So parking requirements, this is a summary of the parking requirements. So for a restaurant, the standard is based on one per two occupants, so there's a maximum of 134, so that gives you 67 required spaces. There's 100 cars, 106 parking spaces provided on the site plan that was included. The pool area is based on one parking space per three occupants. That with 223, assuming that's the correct number, not the number shown on the floor plan, then you end up with 75 spaces. And then the event area, which is the tent area, one per three persons, 223 occupants there as well, 75 spaces. And the applicant has indicated that these would not be operating at the same time, the pool area and the event area. If there's a full event that is occurring where 223 people would be coming, the pool area would not be operational. And so that's how they're proposing that their parking be calculated. However, they're also asking for a waiver for a portion of those spaces, as we've discussed before. Your ordinance allows the planning commission to potentially waive up to 25% of the required parking due to the availability of boat docking, so someone could come to a piece of property or a land use and visit by boat. And if the applicant can demonstrate to you that you believe that up to 25% of the patrons would come by boat, you can reduce the required number of parking spaces. So in this case, they could get 35 spaces total, potentially of the total that was required, which is 142. And they end up actually with a deficit of one, because there's a rounding up that had to take place, and so they're short one space. So I'm sure that's something that could be resolved, that this was accepted by them modifying the plan or making an adjustment in the number of people. But assuming you accept that waiver, then potentially they would, with some minor adjustments, be able to provide for the amount of parking under this particular format. There is also requirements for parking lot green space, and these are highlighted on this plan. There's a 10% landscape, one of the items we've mentioned in our report is to confirm the landscape island dimensions, because some don't appear to meet the 10-foot minimum width. That's a detail that can be, I think, figured out at some point in the future with some minor adjustments. And then they've asked for an extension of paving of the parking lot. Your ordinance requires that it be done immediately or within six months, and they're asking to extend that out beyond that timeframe. That's something you can't grant permission for, because that's a change from the ordinance. So they would have to actually ask the zoning board of appeals for that type of a variance to extend that. So just so you know, that's something that can't be granted by the planning commission, because you can't waive an ordinance provision. The applicant has always also indicated that they have two parking seasons. The off-season is from November 1st to May 1st, where they said that only a restaurant would be in operation, so 67 spaces would be required and 106 provided, which would be in compliance. And then the on-season, so to speak, which is from May to November, and that's where they have the one-space division and the waiver that's been mentioned. Now, the other factor that we've discussed briefly previously is whether or not the marina itself, which is the boats coming in and birthing and being able to have access to the island, if that would in fact require parking, because your ordinance has a parking requirement, and it's one for every two boat berths, okay? One space for every two boat berths. So that's a decision that you're gonna have to make in terms of whether or not you think that applies. They are also asking that those boat areas be available for overnight, and that's where a concern has been raised about the potential to generate a parking demand when a boat can stay overnight, because theoretically you could be there, a friend could be there, and that you could wanna spend the night and park your car there. So do you feel comfortable that the marina is not gonna actually generate parking spaces? So that's a discussion that you should have with the applicant, and you should get feedback and determine if you're comfortable with the fact that the marina, as it is going to be operated, is not gonna actually generate any parking, because that's what they're proposing to, that it will not generate any parking demand. It will only be the actual uses, the restaurant, the event areas, and the like, that are gonna generate the demand for parking on the site. Traffic, they did submit a traffic impact assessment, and it has been reviewed. So here's a summary, based on accounts that were taken August 16th through 20th. Saturday had the highest volume on Dyke Road with 15,347 vehicles per day. The highest hourly count was on Friday, on Friday it was 1,200 vehicles from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the highest hourly count on Saturday was 1,139 vehicles from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The traffic study suggests that no more than 65% of the vehicles will arrive and leave during the peak hour, which would mean a maximum of 68 hourly trips based on the 106 parking spaces that are provided there. And the study assumes that 50% of the traffic would be entering and 50% would be exiting during that highest peak hour of the day. The proposed development according to the study and the plans is planned for a build-out of summer of 2022, once all the improvements are in place. Our traffic group believes that when you have a build-out that extends beyond one year, you typically account for background growth in traffic, that's traffic that's growing from other developments in the area. We've provided some background historic counts, and typically, we've seen a range of 1 1/2% to 2% annual growth rate that's applied to adjust background or existing traffic to a future point in time. So that's something that we have not seen in the current traffic impact assessment. Also, there are warrants that MDOT uses to determine whether or not a left-turn lane or a right-turn taper or lane is required for a property. And the chart provided by MDOT, which is actually in their study, is based on the total development and the existing traffic volumes, but it doesn't factor in the background growth rate, and it doesn't factor in the traffic from this development on top of the existing project when you look at the total 24-hour volume. So if you were to amend that, we believe that it will have an impact on where the chart falls. It's very close to warranting a left-turn lane accommodation, which would be either a passing lane or a center-left turn lane. So we'd like to see some more information. Also, the applicant's indicated that if the parking lot is full, they're essentially gonna close the driveway and not allow anybody else in. So one of the questions we have in that scenario is, if there's an event there, let's say it's a large wedding and that's in the evening, I know they're assuming, they're asking for you to assume that 25% would be coming by boat. Well, if it's bad weather and people decide to drive, what happens if those people drive and they wanna come there and there's no parking? They're just gonna turn them away at the driveway? How's that gonna work? You're going, it's not like you're going out to eat, you're just gonna go somewhere else and eat, you're going to a wedding event. So I think there needs to be some discussion about how that's gonna work, and also would that have an impact on some of the assumptions that are related to the inbound less and the inbound rights? Could that possibly increase those numbers? Rosemarine, we talked about the access. Our traffic team felt that depending on what happens there, they really are functioning kind of like a shared driveway now. And what happens when boats and boat trailers are turning out of that particular business? And what impact does that have on the left turns in, left turns out, and the ability to stack and queue? And if a left turn lane was provided, how might that be impacted? So that's just a question we have, could be resolved with some supplemental information. Also, the assumption that boat traffic is not correct, I talked about that a little bit, I kinda combined two together. And so if the wedding guests are arriving on a scheduled event, 90% arrive by vehicle rather than the 75%, that's assumed in the study, and I think our original letter at Tyco it said 25%, but the 75%, is it reasonable to expect that they're just gonna leave and then go somewhere else? And then the boat traffic, as you know, one of the things we asked for was a narrative and findings related to projected weekday and weekend boat traffic, and how boat traffic will impact existing navigation and other nearby users of the waterway. We did not see that narrative. They did provide a series of emails with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I know that they have received a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, but we have not received the narrative that addresses how the boat traffic from this project is going to impact navigation and how much boat traffic would actually be generated during the peak hour on the weekend and weekday peak hours. So because the event area and the outdoor activity areas are in fact special approval uses, there are standards in your ordinance that you need to be aware of and you should be reviewing as part of that. And I'm gonna list them here, I'm not gonna go into them in detail, but I think you've got them, you've reviewed them, but there are several of them. Will it, I'm just gonna hit the highlights. Will it be in accordance with the general objectives, intent, and purposes of the zoning ordinance? Will it be in accordance with the goals and objectives of the master plan? Will it be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed? Will it not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future uses of the same by general vicinity and the community as a whole? Will it be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway, streets, police, fire, stormwater drainage, refuge, disposal, waterway, and the like? Will it not create excessive additional requirements of public cost for facilities or services, and not be detrimental to economic welfare of the community? Will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment or conditions for an operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, et cetera? Will ensure that the development will be preserved in its natural state in as far as practical, and minimizing tree and soil removal, and by topographic modifications which result in maximum harmony with adjacent areas, and will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the zoning district? Also, you have site plan standards in your ordinance as well, so when you review a site plan, you should consider those. These are the, under A, we have the equal access and circulation. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but you have that available in your ordinance. There's a separate circulation component as part of your site plan standards that deals with impacts, stacking lanes, parking lanes, and impacts on adjacent properties. And then you have other site plan review standards that deal with the relationship to the surrounding property. In making the determination, planning commission shall review the plan for negative conditions, such as, but not limited to, location of the principal building and accessory buildings, channeling excessive traffic onto local residential streets, lack of adequate site screening, particular interest of parking, maneuvering, and service areas, impediments to the access of emergency vehicles, site drainage characteristics, accumulation and storage of litter, snow, production of noise, light, smoke, fumes, or dust. And then relationship to natural features, that's another component that you're supposed to review as part of the site plan, infrastructure, landscaping. So to summarize, you have a number of options before you. Obviously, I think one of the first ones is gonna be discussing outstanding questions and determining if you have all the information that you need in order to make a decision. That's obviously very important. When it comes, and you're continuing your public hearing tonight, okay? So that's another key element, is listening to the public, getting input from them. In terms of some outstanding items that we've identified that we think you should discuss, you know, confirmation of proposed occupancies, how many people in all those areas, making sure, since there was some confusion in the plans, we wanna make sure those numbers, everybody understands them, and everybody agrees that that's actually what's being proposed. The hours of operation in the maximum permitted stay for the transient marina. And a big question for the planning commission is, does that overnight parking trigger any additional parking requirements, or does the daytime parking trigger any additional parking requirements because of the marina operation? The hours of operation for the outdoor dining and the live entertainment. Obviously, as we saw from the zoning map and we saw from the aerial photography, there are residential properties nearby. So are you comfortable with the hours of operation that are being proposed for outdoor activities and the impact that that's gonna have on residential areas? If not, would you, if you were to approve this, would you modify that? And so that would be something we would wanna discuss. Parking waivers and the impact of the special land uses, so are you comfortable with the requested 25% parking waiver? Seasonal variations in respect to the required parking, does that seem acceptable in terms of what has been proposed? Parking lot paving timeline and a bond that would ensure that that happens. As I mentioned, you can't grant an extension of the time to construct a parking lot. That would have to be done through the zoning board of appeals. And I mean, when I say construct, I mean paving, they're going to construct it but not finish it. That's their proposal. And then special land use approval standards, site plan, those, I think you're, just summarize those, and you're aware of those. The traffic impact assessment comments, boat traffic and safety, Army Corps of Engineers input, is there additional? input, is there additional information needed? As you're aware, late this afternoon, we did get some information from the Army Corps of Engineers. I haven't had a chance to really go through it. That's, that's, information kind of came in at the last minute. So that's something you may want to review at all, additional, in addition to the information you already have. And then the input from the township engineer, any concerns or comments related to stormwater runoff and other engineering related input. Do you have everything you feel comfortable that you need or would you request anything beyond what you've already received? So in terms of action, there's some options that I think you have before you. Obviously, the applicant's requesting that you approve the special land use and the site plan as presented with no conditions except obviously the paving and the parking that would have to be addressed by the ZDA. So that's, that's, that's what the applicant is asking of you. Another, obviously, a wide variety of variations that could happen depending upon what your findings are after you've gone through your deliberations. One might be, for example, to approve the special land use and site plan as presented, but limit the capacity of the tented event area to some specified lesser amount and reevaluate the capacity, allow them to come back in and ask for expansion at a later date, kind of stepping into it to see if, if it's working and if the assumptions are actually going according to what they proposed and allowing for a reevaluation. So that's another option. Approving the restaurant only and not approving the special land uses. One of the things that's important to keep in mind is the restaurant is a principal permitted use. So if they can show they meet all the ordinance requirements, you need to approve the restaurant because that is a principal permitted use. That's not a discretionary decision. You can't say, oh, I'd rather there not be a restaurant there. You've identified that as a principal permitted use. If it meets all the ordinance requirements, the restaurant itself has to be permitted. Approve the, the restaurant and the pool patio area over, only and allow for the marina with no overnight use. So that could be another option where you're allowing the restaurant, you're allowing for the pool patio area, people can use the docking spaces, but you can't have any overnight guests there and there would be no tented events there. It's kind of another variation. Approve the restaurant and the tented event area only, so, and not approve the pool entertainment area. Approve all special land uses and principal uses, limit the hours of operation of the outdoor activities, put an end time. Approve all special land uses and principal uses and, and limit or prohibit the overnight stay by boats or vehicles, and vehicles. And then other conditions or limitations that we haven't even talked about. Obviously, you always have the option to postpone this if you feel like you still don't have all the information that you need. And then you also have the option to deny the applicant's request if you feel that it does not meet the standards in the ordinance. So those are just a few of the possibilities that I mentioned. There are many more, but I find it might be helpful to put some of those out just so you can think about which option you think fits best in terms of your independent review of the application that is coming forward. So I think I covered all of those leftover items. So I will conclude with leaving the site plan slide up so we can have that for reference and we'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mark, can you join us? Please. At this point, I would move on to the applicants if they would like to address for the public hearing. You're welcome. Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Okay. Joe Henniger, Blue Horseshoe.
Brian Bro, Blue Horseshoe.
We got Rod's paper late Friday emailed to us, which covered a lot of what he had. And, you know, we tried to answer, you know, a lot of specifics that we thought that might not be totally correct in our paper that we got from him. So we prepared a PowerPoint presentation to go over those points. There's some, we feel some points that were missed and we covered it after this presentation. Maybe it's one of them.
I guess we have to. He's getting his exercise tonight. Thank you, Mark.
You may please stand over there. Is this working? Yep. Okay. There we go. Thank you. Okay, this is the, the fourth review. You know, we started this back with our first check written to Giffords back in 2017. So there's been quite a bit of time and effort put into this project. Coming up on two years. This, this has pretty much remained the same. This is basically our engineers, architects, structural engineers, our consultants and whatnot that we've used. This hasn't changed. This is basically our action items since the June 26 planning board meeting. Army Corps agreed with a navigational plan on June 26th, which was, you know, the same day as the meeting, but we couldn't get that information into the meeting because the requirements are due three weeks before that. The Army permit number is listed on as a second bullet item there. Waitrim, which is a consulting firm recommended by MDOT, they gave us a list, 20 names. We called, they're, they're the one who called us back first, we hired them, and they're one of their approved consulting list. They contacted MDOT based on our needs and they request, MDOT requested a traffic impact assessment. MDOT is very familiar with the road. MDOT is familiar with all the roads, that's their job, they're the authority. They said based on what the consultant was telling them, you know, all that was needed was a traffic impact assessment. Waitrim submitted a traffic impact assessment and it was approved by MDOT. So at that point, we were approved. The planners requested a larger traffic scope with summer and weekend counts after we were already approved by MDOT. So a larger scope was agreed on between us and planners and that was done on July 29. Waitrim performed weekend traffic counts August 16 through the 20th. So still during the summer months, we did it as quickly as we could once we finally got the scope agreed upon. It took quite some time to get the scope where everybody agreed to what the scope should be. Waitrim analyzed the data once again and submitted their impact study to MDOT. MDOT approved the traffic impact study and summer weekend counts for our usage. MDOT is now requiring any other off-site improvements to M29 for this development. MDOT issued an approved permit September 26th, permit number is listed on the board. And since that last board, we've installed over 400 feet of new seawall with additional 1,200 foot in progress on the property. So as part of the latest plan submittal, we were informed that a full resubmission package with all the plan sheets would be required. The applicant, oh, excuse me, this is, this is a part of Gifford's.
Yeah, the first is, is the point they made in, in their review. Okay, yeah. And there was a bit of confusion with it because we did ask, there were three, there were three geography drawings that were changed and that was based on MDOT. MDOT asked us to remove the curves. They once asked us to install curves, then they came back and asked us to remove the curves for safety. So we removed the curves, which affected three drawings. We asked if that was, if we could just submit those three drawings. Planners did suggest that it be preferred to have a full set, but we could submit the three drawings as long as we know what the changes were. We went forward with that. There was some confusion we saw in the review because it comes back saying, hey, we required, we didn't perform, but we have emails back and forth. We thought that was acceptable. We hope it didn't cause any more confusion. We realized there's been multiple sets. The changes that were submitted in July meetings were postponed, but the three changes were just the curb remove. That was the only change on those drawings.
Right, and we have submitted over the course of time, many sets of plans with every change. And every set of plans, the very first page never changes because it's the, the island as it was. So that, that doesn't change. You don't change how it was, it was always the same. The seawall pages, those don't change. Some of the changes that we've had to make is take out event area two, which is, you know, taking out the words in the middle there or changing a chart on the page. That only impacts page three, 3A, 3B, 3C, or whatever it might be. So those were the pages we were changing. Instead of going through and creating a whole new 10-page sheet, we emailed the planners dated 9/25. Due to the numerous submittals and versions of this plan, we have, we have reviewed clean copies of all the full site plan package are preferred. And then later goes on, provide a copy of transmittal and any response received from USAC, Army Corps.
Just add that, I know there was a big packet of paper, emails went back and forth. It was my understanding that planners requested just, we want every single transmittal between the Army Corps and us. So we provided every, every conversation back and forth, which is literally.
Hundred plus.
An inch pack of, of emails. But we want to make sure, if they wanted to see the communication back and forth, we provided that. We weren't, I understand we had to, had to basically put a summary together. The summary is actually the permit and the permit goes into pretty good detail. So we included the permit also from the Army Corps. So that was, maybe it was misunderstanding what was required, but it was us that we thought we provided all communication with the Army Corps. So that's kind of, it's a bit confusing, but that's what that pile of paper is.
So, so that's what they wanted was all of our emails in correspondence to the Army Corps, which we provided.
As, as the planners recommended, I saw confusion and they're, we realize those numbers do, do, do change a bit. The, the reason was, one is from an architect standpoint, from a square footage for the building code. And the other is parking. We know we're limited by parking rather than square footage. So the pool area, the architect per the building codes is, is correct for the numbers that is listed there. Although because of the parking limitations, the parking would take precedence, it would be the smaller number of the two.
Which is on the site plan.
Which is on the site plan as well. This was based on, the board had recommended at one point to understand what the building code was for the square footage. And so there is a confusion when you get into those larger spaces like the pool area and the vent area because of the, there's a lot of acreage out there. So we've, we've just probably addressed that better, make that understanding, but one is square footage and one is parking. To help clarify that a bit. The parking hasn't changed. As, as planners mentioned, there is, there is a deficit of one. You know, if you round up the boating, it's really 3.5. So if you round up the parking and you round up, either round them up or both up or both down, we get zero, but you can't round one up and one down. The boating at 142 times 25% is 35.5. So if you take those numbers out, it does equal zero, but that's, it's really, we can work that out if that's, if that's an issue. We talked about hours of operation. The hours of operation permitted for transit marina, that was, the top outline is basically the concern of the planners, we brought it forward. Our goal on that marina, we really want to follow as a transient marina. There's a lot of programs out in Michigan for Michigan boaters, Michigan DNR boating, the infrastructure program, transient docking. Obviously, to encourage more boating, to encourage people to visit the area. And those are just some listing of items, I know it might be difficult to read some of those, but they want to encourage the boating, the boating community of transit docking. The overnight stay, we don't believe that overnight transient boaters are going to require, are going to have cars. Voters, we've voted transient boaters, or I voted all the leg, we have both and traditionally I don't send a car to follow me around, but that we later discussed, and those are some of the strengths we listed. That was directly from the DNR list of transient marinas and what they expect and how they want to promote Michigan, Michigan legs.
Yeah, I think it's important to really point out though, that if, if you're going to a destination, let's say you're going to Brown's by boat, you're not going to bring your car with you. You know, it's, you know, you're driving by boat, you want to go by boat. And basically, you know, when someone's coming to Blue Horseshoe Island by boat, they're not going to bring their car. So to use a parking spot, we don't want a boat and a parking, you know, car using up our spots when we are obviously below the count in terms of having enough parking spaces based on the size of our, of the property.
You know, going into the next, the next highlighted point was the parking waivers and impact special use. You know, we understand, and we want the planners to understand, it's not a traditional, you know, marina with boat wells that are seasonally rented or leased. You know, these are transient, these are coming in for the restaurant, these are possibly staying for the weekend. And that will progress. I don't, I don't think that it will take time to get a transient, transient boaters to know the area, to understand it, to see the benefits. And so that, we don't see it's going to be an overnight. We probably see it more transitional as, as it transitions later to more overnight. At first, we think it's just going to visit the restaurant, have dinner and leave, stay the evening, stay the afternoon, and whatnot. See as, as the season, you know, in respects to boat parking, obviously, the, we're asking for, this review to planners to, you know, the planners deferred to, obviously, the planning board makes a decision on, on that 25% use for transient boaters. Again, we're asking for that as we did in the application to approve the maximum amount of 25% required for parking spaces be supplied by the transient docking facilities.
You know, one of the things too, you know, we are an island, you know, there is a marina, there was a marina there, you know, we've been approved by the Army Corps and DEQ to, to, to more boats. You know, and people on the, you know, hopefully in this room will want to come enjoy the property, see the sunsets from the property, have something to eat there, be with their friends, these kinds of things. They're going to be coming by boat, showing up on pontoons, whatever. You know, we're going to need to, you know, have space to park the boats for people to come in and use. So that's why the 25%, you know, is requested.
You know, we talked about, you know, the planner's made a good point about the parking lot paving timeline, the bonds, and that was one, another point that was raised in that review. We understand that, we agree with it. We want to back, back off on that and agree to the six-month extension if necessary. Again, it's based on the weather and time if needed. So again, we, we are back to saying in this that we accept that, we understand it, and we would like to move forward and accept a six-month period if, if we, if necessary.
And one of the things too about that is, you know, we're building on an island, you know, we're basically on ground that needs to settle with the parking lot. You know, we put the material down, you know, there's going to be some movement and things like that over time. So, you know, we want to make sure that when we lay that nice cap. Um, you know, and people on the, you know, hopefully in this room will want to come enjoy the property, see the sunsets from the property, have something to eat there, uh, be with their friends. These kinds of things. They're going to be coming by boat, showing up on pontoons, whatever. You know, we're going to need to, you know, have space to park the boats for people to come in and use. So that's why the 25%, you know, is requested.
You know, we talked about, you know, the planners made a good point about the parking lot paving timeline, the bonds. And that was one, another point that was raised in that review. We understand that, we agree with it. We want to back, back off on that and agree to the six-month extension if necessary. Again, it's based on the weather and time if needed. So again, we, we are back to saying in this that, uh, we accept that, we understand it, and we would like to move forward and accept a six-month period uh, if, if we, if, if necessary.
And one of the things too about that is, you know, we're building on an island. You know, we're basically on ground that needs to settle with the parking lot. You know, we put the material down. You know, there's going to be some movement and things like that over time. So, you know, we want to make sure that when we lay that nice cap on top and make it, you know, nice for everyone, that it's not going to be waving, cracking, and in disrepair. So if we get some additional time where we're driving on the, the gravel lot, which, you know, there's a lot of gravel lots around here in other cities. Um, and then we can put the nice coat over the top.
I mean, we know that we had high waters this year. It was, it was, uh, everything was a bit soggy, or we had a very wet spring. The seawalls will help dry that out, um, and again, the additional material on top. So we understand that the restrictions on the planning board, and we accept that as, as the ordinance are written. Uh, back to the, back to the special land use approval. We've already in the application addressed a lot of those, um, those items that were, were brought up earlier. You know, the one thing that came back, and of course the police reviewed it, and the police chief, Michael Chek's statement summarized it best. And he came out and said basically in writing, in, in, in the, was returned into the board, planning board, that after his review of the latest information regarding the Blue Horseshoe project, at this time, I, I have no additional concern, immediate concerns. After reading the traffic, lighting, and sound studies performed, it appears that they are taking the necessary steps to comply with Clay Township ordinances. Now, some of those things like the sound, you know, we want to know if that sound is going to make a difference. You know, we'll buy, we're planning to buy, buy the ordinances, including the sound ordinances. We did a study with noise coming from those areas, and we showed that the last meeting, so that's been already.
And that, that wasn't required or asked for by the planners. We did that on our own. We went out and hired a firm out of Ann Arbor, Soundscape Engineering. Uh, they performed a computer-generated model, you know, that, that determines the sound and, you know, takes in all the factors based on the site location. And basically, uh, their numbers came back, you know, well below what the street noise level is, which is basically, you know, Stark Road's 1,000 feet away. And based on that, you know, if it's at a certain level, this is what it's at. So we want to be below that level, you know, we want, uh, this, you know, not to disrupt any of our neighbors.
You know, MDOT, we went to MDOT, it was part of that conclusion of the traffic study. And going back to placing the bond for MDOT, and we've got now, we've received the permit, permit number. So that is for the driveway, the bond is placed for the driveway and, and the approach. We've had several meetings with MDOT, we've had communication with our, it's really our engineers that are hired to do that, although we were, we were attend, attended most of those meetings. And that permit was issued, you can see the dates on that.
With the permit number there.
You know, back on this traffic assessment, it's a lot of detail here, and it's really the, it's, so our traffic consultant read the review, the planner's review, and spoke with MDOT. And there were some, some, we can go through and definitely read this, I mean, the.
Yeah, I think, I think basically, um, you know, Wade Trim, our consulting firm, we, we got this paper that you guys saw that Giffles put up there. And there was some things that, uh, they responded, Wade Trim responded and read here. Okay, so, uh, first bullet point, based on, this is from Wade, uh, Giffles. Based on the counts taken by the applicant's consultant, August 16th through the 20th, Saturday had the highest volume of 15,347 vehicles per day on Dyke Road. The highest hourly count on Friday was 1,200 vehicles from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And the highest hourly count on Saturday was 1,139 vehicles from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Okay, I think you already heard that, he said that, but the response from Wade Trim, uh, there appears to be a statement of fact taken from the traffic study. However, the actual traffic count shows that Friday has the highest volume with 15,347 vehicles per day. Saturday's volume was 14,936. So maybe that was a typo, he should have put Friday in there instead of Saturday, or maybe he should have put the 14,000. So that was incorrect based on the actual traffic study that was conducted. The second bullet point they had, the traffic study suggests that no more than 65% of the vehicles will arrive and leave during the peak hour, which would mean a maximum of 68 hourly trips, which would be 106 times 0.65. The study assumes 50% are entering and 50% are exiting during the peak hour. Wade Trim's response to that bullet point from Giffles Webster is, "The peak hour is determined as a 60-minute period with the highest number of vehicles. It is realistic to assume that 65% of the total trips, or 68 trips, would occur during the peak hour. If the island only has a restaurant, then the number of trips entering and exiting during the morning and evening peak hour would be 23 entering and 19 exiting during the morning peak, and 26 entering and 15 exiting during the evening peak hours. Only during the Saturday peak hour is 50% entering and 50% exiting. Never does the restaurant generate 68 trips. The restaurant's maximum number of trips is 48. Because there are no, because there are no other events that would generate 68 trips, a 50% entering and 50% exiting was used to estimate the highest number of vehicle trips." Now, this is a lot of words, but this is what MDOT is the authority on. These are the numbers that they based on the hundreds of thousands of restaurants and turns going in and out and how much in time, and this is, this is basically the facts of what their consultants are saying. And then there's a whole nother page here, but, uh, another bullet point from Giffles was, "The proposed development, development is planned for build-out in summer of 2022. Therefore, a minimum growth rate should be applied to forecast 2022 traffic volumes. MDOT TDMS provides historical traffic counts on Dyke Road by the site driveway. The annual growth rate from 2014 to 2019 is 5.2. A minimum range of a half a percent to 2% growth rate is recommended. However, an appropriate growth rate should be obtained from MDOT personnel for a purpose of this study." Okay? And Wade Trim's response is, we contacted Michael Erickson, who is MDOT, who works for MDOT. Uh, he's the permit engineer for MDOT for the Huron TSC. And after talking to the other personnel in his office concluded that 1% growth rate should be used. Note, and another note to note is, our build-out is projected for 2020, not 2022. Unless, you know, there's, you know, plans to, to have a bunch more, uh, planning board meetings. We, we would like to start next year to build the restaurant and feel that we can get that done next year and be open by next year. It's not a big restaurant. It's about 4,500 square feet. So it's smaller than Bobby Mack's restaurant. And then the other bullet point from Giffles was, "The left turn auxiliary lane chart is provided by MDOT is based on total development. Therefore, the, the site-generated trips and any background growth rate trips should be added to the forecast to weigh 24-hour volume. The plot point in that chart falls closer to the threshold, which would indicate the eventual need for a left turn accommodation. Also, would a large wedding event where guests arrive within one hour of the ceremony and most stay until later in the evening have an impact on the assumptions related to inbound left and right turns?" And then Giffles responded, or, excuse me, Wade Trim responded, "If you apply a 1% growth rate to the 15,347 vehicles for a two-year period, then by 2022, you would expect 15,655 vehicles. As you can tell by viewing the MDOT chart, the 15,655 lies very close to 15,347, which means a passing flare is still not needed. One can make a variety of assumptions concerning arrivals and departures at a large wedding, but keep in mind weddings are not random events occurring all hours of day or night. Weddings are planned events, and as mentioned a number of times in our submittal documents, when a wedding is planned, one of the many items our staff will discuss is the vehicle access during the wedding and alternatives for vehicle access, assuming it's a large wedding." So during the planning of the wedding and the wedding day and all that kind of stuff, we're going to be talking about, how many are your people coming by boat? How many are people coming by car? Do you only have this many cars to come in and that's it? Parking passes can be issued on larger events. Should we be fortunate to have a larger wedding for somebody in the area who wants to have, you know, their, their kid get married? Great.
Now, now, just to clarify, so this is the, this is the actual drawing that was, uh, which we, the drawing that was shown earlier was a drawing that we proposed to the Army Corps. The Army Corps spent about a year of investigation, and they were pretty thorough. We went back and had several meetings, they asked several questions. Obviously, you see a, two inches of email back and forth, plus that doesn't count the meetings that we had. What we agreed to at the final navigation was a big concern of theirs, uh, especially on the north end with the residents there. We'd agree to keep that north end clear, post signs. We also agreed, agreed not to extend on the east side past 30 feet. So, uh, they do it by foot, so that depends on the boat. If you have, uh, there are boats that are eight foot wide, and there's boats that are 20 foot wide. So it would, would be not to exceed that seawall limit. The current docking there is 40 foot. So what we actually do is, when we knock out that old dock that still exists today, we'll actually increase the canal by 10 foot on that east side. Uh, and we're limited by the extent of the, um, of, of the, of course, from the 30 foot from the seawall. As we get narrow, we drop it down. On the south side, we have, we have, we own the property on both sides of that, of that south shore. And depending on the numbers offhand, they're listed on that map, there's several, there's still 100 foot feet wrapped in. Now, when the Army Corps asked us to do this, they said, give us the worst case. So it looks a bit silly to have all these boats wrapped up. And to have something like this would be a, probably absolute rare, rare, rare opportunity to fill up that many boats. To kind of get an idea, a Brown's Restaurant has about 60 rest, six, about 60 parking wells for boats. I have seen it filled on busy weekends and, and some fundraisers they do with poker runs and whatnot. They can fill all, all, all 60 spots. They're also on one acre compared to almost five acres. So we've got about 3,000, over 3,000 footage around that. Uh, and we eliminate, still eliminate the 500 on the north end and eliminate pretty much the front. We, we still land about 25, 2600 feet of, uh, of, of shore. And of that shore, boat parking will be about, uh, there's about 1,600 feet of seawall been approved by the Army Corps.
And the Army Corps spent a lot of time going over this back and forth, believe you me. You know, there's, there was a lot of work involved to make this right. Um, you know, the docks that are currently there are sticking out 40 feet, as you said. We gave up 10 foot of that to bring it in tighter. You know, and we listened to some of the concerns from some of the people on Stark Drive that are here tonight. And we took off any docking on the north shore, keep that whole channel open. That was a concern. We took care of it. So basically, we gave up part of our frontage and agreed not to park any boats there because, uh, you know, it was good for the community, and we don't want to have any problems with navigation in that canal. You know? Uh, so, and then as Brian said, the bottom south channel, south pond. Uh, you know, we own both sides and we're allowed to park in that area as, as we have to sign here. The previous map that was on the first slide was not the correct map in the, uh, in the emails that was agreed upon by the Army Corps. This is the correct map.
Some of the other stipulations they asked for, they want posted signs, of course, every 50-foot intervals on the north side, they know boat parking, the people that are coming in, anytime realizes no parking allowed. Uh, they've also asked for that same sign is put on the, on the east shore, the channeling not to exceed the 30 foot. And although there's not a, a number for it, they also want a representative out there working those docks on the busy area. So people aren't parking, they're parking outside of these requirements.
And the, uh, the boats that are listed there, basically Brian took a boat that was on the property, so it was to scale, and put those in there. Those I believe are 28 footers or?
No, I think that's, those, that, we use one that was on scale, it was on the island. So there's one on the island, you can kind of see it, it's a, it was stored there that, that year. It's a 34 C raise, so we use that. I would think the average is probably below that for boats and, uh, on the lake. But we use a 34 C raise and got, and got those. I think there's 106 boats. Obviously boats, every boat's different size and width.
But those are bigger boats, and we think you're going to get 106 34-foot C rays around, you know? They're going to be smaller. Center councils, things like that, pontoons in the area.
Uh, I know there's some input regarding the planners regarding storm runoff. Back in December, the, uh, the engineering staff from Project Control submitted to the township their thoughts in regards to the drainage, the sewage, the water system. And they made it, made it clear that a retention pond was not required for this property, for this development. They do require a, um, a pre-treatment requirement, and we submitted that to, there's a drawing there. We submitted that to both the city, the township, and to the, uh, engineers at Project Control. We also followed up and emailed the planners in, I believe, early March, March 19th. And then we followed up and put in that, that disclaimer at the bottom uh, in both the applications of April and July. We didn't put it on the site plan. Our, our, it is on our mechanical drawings, uh, that will be submitted to building. Our engineers, uh, basically made the claim that this, this, that, that portion is not, is, will be in mechanical drawings and not on the site plan. So we thought we addressed that, it keeps coming up. We hope we addressed it. If we need more information on that, uh, we can provide that. But the, uh, both the township engineering team and our engineering team come to the conclusion of the system that's, uh, will meet the ordinances.
And as you all know, you know, there are no storm sewers in Clay. So water on Dyke Road is pouring off, you know? Uh, we will have the, uh, an item that's going to be in the parking lot, which, which is approved. And we've already discussed this in previous meetings.
It's like catch basin. Basically, all the drains will drain into one catch basin. That catch basin will pre-treat that water, and then it will pump into that, pump into the lake. Uh, when it comes down to develop, where we've gone, we've got the DEQ approval, we've talked about many of these. Uh, the Army Corps has now approved us. It wasn't since our last, last meeting, planning board meeting. Uh, we were approved the following day. We knew it was closed, but we, we didn't have the actual permit yet. Uh, our traffic input study was, was approved, um, by MDOT, obviously by, by, by the permit. Uh, Michigan Liquor Control approved the liquor license for the property. Now it's, that's what, now it's sitting in escrow, waiting, waiting to move forward. Clay Township Police approved it.
Their checklist.
Along with fire, their checklist, it was turned into the township. Uh, soil erosion permit's been, been approved and posted. Uh, our sound study was approved, you know, by our engineers, also by the, uh, police reviewed that. Uh, structural being approved, we had a structural architects out at a bridge for what it sits now. We had, we had concerns about moving heavy equipment across. It was approved for now, and as we approved, approved that bridge at the, they looked at those plans and approved that, and that was approved. The sanitary system, the engineers came back and said the system can handle the develop, the current system can handle that, uh, this development, so that was approved. And also distribution of water. They came back and said the water system can handle the development, my proposal. When it comes down to it, the summary, uh, as, as was mentioned earlier, the summary, we're asking planning board to approve the planning, uh, propose as, as, as the action been taken. We approved the special, approved the special land use as, uh, the site plan as presented with no conditions except for paving the lot as required.
You know, and in closing too, you know, in terms of our presentation, you know, um, you know, we want to put together a nice project here. The township tried to buy the property from the Lupinskis at one time, and they wanted to make something for the community. Um, it's been said to me by several different people, some that work, uh, here at the township, that, you know, we don't have anything fun around here. Uh, we're trying to make a nice place. We're trying to take consideration in terms of our neighbors and things like that. We're trying to follow every ordinance, you know, that we can. And we're, you know, basically, we're in a meeting, and then we, you know, we get something from Giffles a day or two after the meeting, and then we got to hurry up, get something done in four or five days and get it turned back in. You know, we, we ran as fast as we could, including turning this presentation around within two days. You know, we want to get things done, we want to do it right. And, you know, we feel that this would be a real asset to the community. There's things that we want to do, you know, for the community and for the police and fire. I, I saw some of them here earlier, but they left. Um, you know, we want to do things that, that are charitable type events where, uh, you know, maybe we have a special event and, and some proceeds go towards, you know, some type of charities in this area. A big part of what we are behind is Safe Lake St. Clair. Brian and I both live on the lake. You know, I, you know, we own one of the biggest properties in Clay Township. And, you know, I own a house on Marina Drive in Clay Township. Um, you know, I'm a landowner in Clay Township. Uh, you know, and I want to put my own money in here, you know? And we want to together, uh, make a plan to put together something that's going to be. And we want to together make a plan to put together something that's going to be well-run, good food, you know, and, and good events. We don't want troublemakers coming, we don't want people coming blasting the radio. You know, we want to know who's, you know, who's disrupting the system and we're going to talk to them. I'm going to work there, my wife's going to work there, Brian's going to work there. You know, we're going to be there to make sure that this thing is going to operate nicely and be an asset to the community. I know that Clay Township has lost, you know, you know, the boat dealership colony on the corner there. Excuse me. And, you know, some of the restaurants around, but I think, sorry, I'm losing my voice. But I think this is something that you guys will be proud of and it would be an asset to the community. Excuse me.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
I just want to make two very important corrections. I'm not going to go through every item and provide a response. But there are two things that were said that were incorrect and I need to correct. In the very beginning of the presentation, the applicant said that they've written checks to Giffords. I make it very clear, there have been zero checks from the applicant written to Gifford Webster. The way the process works for this application and every other applicant that comes before the township is they submit applications to the township, they pay the township whatever the township chooses to charge as an application fee. That covers things like administration and it covers the fee of consultants, including planners and engineers. We submitted an invoice to the township for what are our charges as your consultant. There are no checks written from the applicant to Gifford Webster. I want to make sure everyone is very clear about that. Number two, the traffic impact study. The applicant was puzzled how we referred to a 2022 opening. I have the applicant's traffic study prepared by their consultant and I'm just going to quote it. It says that the 4,210 square foot restaurant is going to open late 2020 or early 2021. The event area with 424 persons is proposed to open in 2020 or early 2021. The pool area will open in late summer, or excuse me, in the summer of 2022. And the pool dock and patio area with 223 people will be open in the summer of 2022. So we got the time, 2022, from the applicant himself. Okay, so just to make sure everyone's clear where the information is coming from. This is what's given to us and that's what we have provided and was the basis for some of our information.
Thank you for those two clarifications. I am now going to turn to public comments. Anybody actually do you mind? Maybe, Harold, we went to him like that. Well, let him have a look. And I see something that's really interesting to show. We're going to try to do this in orderly fashion. Please keep in mind the rules that Christine brought as far as three minutes, six minutes. Tonight, Tom Posel is going to be our timekeeper. When you come to the podium, state your name and if you are representing a group or an individual. And we will proceed, hopefully in a very orderly fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Gary Yenralek, on behalf of some of the property owners in the neighborhood who are opposed to this and have considerable concerns. And also partly we feel the due process to the neighbors is violated when the applicant comes tonight with new data that the people in the public nor yourself have an opportunity to digest. Now, the planner did provide us his report that came out on Friday and I circulated that to the people in the area. The, because they got a permit from the DEQ or the Corps, doesn't mean that you have to approve their special land use. And I've been in contact with the Corps and the DEQ and they responded to me back in April after they gave their, the DEQ did, gave their permit. It says, "Many of the issues raised are for other agencies to review and approve if appropriate." So I'll give you that letter and I'll give a copy to the applicant so he knows what's transpired. So I, I highlighted that.
Can I ask a favor? Could you hand a copy to the Secretary of State?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Today is the 23rd.
Back in June of this year, I corresponded with your group as to concerns of my clients. And I pointed out and attached to it some summaries of your ordinance as to this particular situation and the special approval land use criteria. But I also pointed out that if this is considered a recreational facility, you have to have a minimum of 10 acres. On page 161, section 2043 of your ordinance says recreational, commercial, outdoor activities. It says you need a minimum of 10 acres for amphitheater, amusement parks, resorts and campgrounds and similar items with a minimum width of 600 feet. All of their submissions say it's four acres. Your planner says it's four acres. Now, the aerials over time show that the island has diminished in size. But basically their plan says a land above the water that's going to go inside their sea wall and riprap is the four acres. So I don't think you can approve this because they don't meet the minimum size requirement. Now, excuse me, Wake Trim did issue a report on the traffic back on May 31st, 2019. And page five had the aerial and it was somewhat similar to the one aerial that your planner had. And the traffic counts, you know, you need engineers to make assessments to give you information. But one of the things that we've said in the past and the neighbors have said in the past, if you visit the site, the site distance when you come out of that driveway that leads to their bridge is significantly restricted by the bridge abutment and the guardrail. So when you're pulling out, whether you're going to go left and west towards Fairhaven or if you're going to go east towards Alkanac, you have that bridge abutment and guardrail. And none of those studies have addressed that. And I'll give you, this was page five from that report. And presumably you have that or rather you thought, as a matter of convenience. It clearly shows the concrete bridge abutment and the guardrail leading down to Bill Rose's facility. So when you come out of that facility, their facility, you're on an uphill climb, you're going to turn right or left, your visibility to the left is significantly impaired. Now, if you go to Fairhaven, Ira Township, there's that Dollar General store this side. They, MDOT made that facility put in the left turn lane. Well, if you have a wedding or some other special event here, whether you're coming from the east or west, there's going to be left turns. When you go to Dollar General, it's not a specific event. So I would think from a common sense perspective that the traffic flow is intermittent. But if you have an event, a wedding, people are going to show up within a half hour timeframe of the scheduled event and that's when you're going to have these issues. The, in conjunction with the traffic situation, in that area, you have a traffic light at Palms Road to interrupt traffic flow. And the next light is down at the ferry. There's not one you, one where you come off of Anchor Bay Drive, there's that warning light. So without traffic lights in close proximity, you don't get gaps in the traffic flow. And that, to me, adds to a safety issue. The, and once be 30 seconds. I just want to give you some photographs of what the bay looks like in the summertime already because those are navigational issues. And I'd like these pictures back and you can circulate them amongst yourselves. And part of your master plan says it's important to preserve the natural features because in your community, just like Chesterfield and the Baltimore, you have a lot of wetlands because you're along the water, you're along the river. And this significantly impacts it. And in their study, in their Corps permit, because I've had discussions with them, they show rafting off four boats. Well, if you're all buddies and you tie up next to each other, you might not care if somebody goes across your boat. But I suspect if you're a boater, you're not going to like somebody if you're the first guy on the dock, three boats or two boats or one boat next to you to get from their boat to the dock. And in my previous letters, at the far end up in here, if there's a fire up here and there's boats, how does the fire department get to it? And in their submission before, they said that they were going to use portable johns to facilitate lavatory needs, which seems kind of farfetched.
I want to ask you to try to wrap it up as you.
So we would like you to either postpone it so that you and us have an opportunity to review this new data in the Corps permit data or deny it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who wishes to come forward and speak?
Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane. And I'm speaking on behalf of several of the residents back in the Steyer Sub or Purge Point Isles as it's referred to in our, in our ordinances. One thing that I've asked a couple of times was whether the Planning Commission has actually made a site visit. Has anyone gone there? As a group, you've made a site visit, was that advertised?
Not, no, that's not what we do.
Planning Commission handbook says that if you're going to make a site visit, that it's supposed to be advertised and the whole group goes together to visit it. But anyway, I'm wondering why we continue to entertain a swim out bar. The state of Michigan, Rule R 325.2192, so paragraph nine, states that alcohol cannot be served in any pool in the state of Michigan. So paragraph 10 says that no one can enter a swimming pool after they have consumed alcohol. So I'm not sure why we continue to entertain a swim out bar at this location. Also, in regards to the boat traffic study, I don't know if that picture can be put up there. But down at the bottom where they showed the two boats, where you come underneath of the bridge, there's a building right on that right-hand corner as you're, as you come out from the bridge and you go to make a right-hand turn. So as you're coming out from that bridge to turn right to, to go through the Bouvier Creek where the Blue Wave Kayak Trail is and where the boats will be rafted off over here, it's very, very poor visibility currently. Boats that are 40 foot long and they're, and they're docked head into a sea wall, it's very easy for them to back out and maneuver out in either direction. Now, when you're rafted off side by side, when these boats come in, they're going to have to turn around and then dock to do a sidewall docking. The only location that is wide enough for them to turn around is right there at the mouth of the bridge where the 150 people, the homes, more people, 150 homes back in the Steyer Sub come under that bridge in order to go out to the back. So that's going to be a very, very congested area there. And in my opinion, at least eight to 10 rows where they show double parking should be only single allowed. They have requested that there be no restrictions placed on the, on the transient marina. I believe that we do need to, to issue restrictions because the Corps of Engineers has said they can go out 30 feet. So if they're allowed to go out 30 feet and we don't put a restriction that says, no, they can't, they will and we will have problems with boat accidents with people trying to turn around in that limited area there. And the transient parking marina, our ordinances are pretty clear about overnight parking for the transient marinas. I, I believe that that should be a request for a waiver of our ordinance if we're not going to add the parking for the transient marina. Thank you.
Thank you.
I ran out of time.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Oh, I thought I was out of time.
Well, we had a misunderstanding. You could, you could get another misunderstanding.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was trying to rush through that. Excuse me, I got lost on my train of thought.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, the Corps of Engineers area. So they say 136 boats, but then they said that they had used 34 foot boats. They anticipate smaller boats. That means that there's actually going to be more boats parked there. And I know for a fact that if you allow transient overnight docking, that people from other areas are going to drive to that marina. They're going to park and jump out of boat and go out and enjoy a weekend because they don't have their own boat. We'll meet you at the island. And we're going to need that parking. And that's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next member of the audience, sir.
Hello, my name's Keith Stein and I'm at 7889 Stark. First of all, I want to thank the board for giving me an opportunity to speak. And a lot of things have been rehashed over the last several months regarding this project. So I won't, I won't repeat those. And in an effort to be quick, I'll just address a couple of points. One is that island prior to the purchase was used for all sorts of things, including dumping all kinds of boat parts, oil, gas, whatnot. The concern that the residents in the area have is that if there's going to be a resident, a restaurant built there and a facility that hundreds of people are going to be exposed to, how are we going to protect the community from the hazards of the environmental waste that's on that island? And has there been any kind of environmental studies to protect the community for when this building is built and the digging up of this property is commenced? We already have a situation where in this particular area, the cancer rates are amongst the highest in the state. We have people on our street on Stark who are already battling cancer. We do not need a situation where stuff is dredged up and, and impacts the quality of the air that we all breathe. The, the other issue related to that is according to their plans, there appears to be a spot on the island that the debris material will be pulled and pooled at. And this, this will be, I believe, seven feet high according to the plans. So this is going to be soil that comes from the lake, the bottom of the lake, which is where all the contaminants rest. So we're going to be pulling out this contaminated soil and leaving it in front of my neighbors' homes. I think that's an unacceptable solution. And lastly, I just want to reiterate what was previously said about a comment that the applicants had said that people will come by boat and they won't have cars. People will join them with cars. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming in for your comments. Anybody else in the audience who would like to make a comment?
My name's Steve Harrison and I live on the Baby Shores area. There is somewhat affected by your plans. All I can hear is what a benefit this is going to bring to this community. I, I try to see that because I already got many restaurants I go to. And you talk about a wedding destination. I, I just don't see a lot of people wanting to come out here for a wedding. But most of the people that you're trying to attract out here might be driving home in some abbreviated condition. You talk about the peak traffic, always the peak traffic. I don't really care about the peak traffic. It's all the traffic.
Sir, can I ask you to speak into the microphone?
Okay. I don't really care about, the, the peak traffic is, is a concern, but there's other traffic. There's a 2:00 AM traffic, there's the 11:00 There's a 2:00 AM traffic, there's the 11 o'clock traffic, it's a drunk driver traffic. It's a drunk driver driving down the street, coming up to that bridge with the poor visibility. That's the traffic I'm concerned about. And when it comes to the boating, you know, you say, all I ever hear is the benefits, but all we need is another variance for this, another variance for this, another variance for this. But when it comes to the safety of the traffic, we're not going to, we're just going to do the minimum, whatever the DNR or the MDOT says, we'll do the minimum of that. If you really wanted to make a point in what a benefit this was, you would say, "We are going to redo that bridge, we are going to add a left-turn lane to ensure this doesn't happen." Not, "Well, we don't have to do that because MDOT doesn't say it's required." To me, that doesn't sound like this is what you want, you're concerned about the people rather than the business that you're trying to jam into this. And it's very appropriate that it's a blue horseshoe, because this makes me sick. And you're horseshoeing a resort into a bedroom community where there wasn't before. You say there was a marina, but there's a reason why there's no marina there anymore. It didn't make it. And a lot of these, I may go down the street to a wedding chapel at a marina, I see the sign every day, I drive in and out, that boat will be buried in this rental for weddings. And to think that nobody's, when they go to spend the night, that they're not going to crank up their stereos? Now I got to cut the cops from Clay Township to go tell the guy to turn down his stereo? Don't I got to worry about what else is happening in the prime, that I got to worry about the transient guy who's all of a sudden gets to spend the night in somebody's backyard cranking up their stereo? You know this happens, this is boaters, we're all boaters, we all do it, but now it's going to be in people's backyards, so that you can have a restaurant to hang out in. I appreciate the fact that you want to bring money and investment into this area, but hey, Harson's Island's right across the way, man, they got a whole boys' club over there, and you can put it in over there. I don't know why that didn't go through. But all of a sudden, we're going to take that, you know, that kind of investment and put it over in this neighborhood.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I got to ask you to wrap it up. Your time's up.
Well, I'm just about done anyways, so I appreciate the time. There's a lot to say, I think that woman said it best, but, you know, this is, you're jamming something in, you're jamming something. Every time you ask for a variance, you're jamming it in.
Thank you. Any other members in the audience who would like to come forward? I didn't see her, I'm sorry.
Scott Walgrave, Star Drive. I just have one comment that, back in 2012, your vast plan says we're already overbuilt by 50% marinas. Do we really need another one? That's just my question, my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Was there someone in the second row?
My name is Linda Foring, 7770 Phillips Drive, and in response to what Mr. Harrison said, and the lady over here with the boats, on Phillips Drive, we've got all the boats all summer long behind us, hundreds. And they say that they're in the boats, people don't come and visit. We have people coming across our property, they come to the seawall, pick their friends up, we're asking them to stay off our property. We've even had pizza deliveries and some deliveries that we've had to pick off our lots. And they're right there, and to enjoy the sunsets, which I have a perfect view, I can't, because all the boaters with all the different radio stations, you can't even hear yourself think, let alone talk out back. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello, my name is Malnay, and I live on 8841 Encribe Drive. And I do have a big question about how this establishment will be in harmony with this area. We have one of the very few wet prairies left in the world, and it would be great that we focus on that and being proud of that, rather than a restaurant, which we have plenty of in this world. I did some very quick math, which is not my strength, and we're 400 people in the event hall, 300 boats, 300 from the boats, which there might be 100 of, so a few people per boat. It might result in 800 people in total. That's almost 1,000 people. And there, some of them might be coming to a wedding. What happens at 10 o'clock after a wedding? Everybody is celebrating their life out, right? You know, they want to celebrate like they're not going to celebrate for the next 20 years. And those people are very hard to keep quiet, and it's going to be a great detriment to the residents, and I think it's very clear that the community doesn't want it. Thank you so much.
Any other members in the audience who would like to come forward?
My name's Annette Heiza, and I live on Flamenco Road, and I just have a couple of comments to make. First, a comment somebody made about the transient marinas and can't spend the night. Well, I believe the Alvinic Harbor Club has quite a few transit marinas, or boat spaces, that people spend the night there. I also believe the North Channel Yacht Club is transit, and they spend the night there, the week there, the weekends there. That's a couple of things, there's a lot of overnight going on there. And the people from the Phelps Road area, they're off Anchor Bay Drive, they're half a mile, about, about half a mile from the island. They're not that close to the island. Well, four, maybe a quarter mile to a half a mile from the island, so they're quite a ways away from the island.
The audience, please keep it down so we can hear you. Thank you.
And another thing, you know, this community, I can't remember the last time we had a brand-new business come in and build brand-new facilities and brand-new buildings in Clay Township. I can't think of a brand-new building, a brand-new facility. You know, there's nothing new here for somebody to say, "Yeah, that's an up-and-coming community. Things are developing, things are coming alive, there's things to do there." Well, there's not a lot to do here in Clay Township, and there's not that many restaurants around. And if you do go to one, you have to wait a long time, because the lines are so long. So I guess that's all I wanted to say. We just need something, some development in this community to bring up our property values. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? The gentleman standing up.
I'm Neil Sterling, I live on Island Drive, 9427. I'm an avid boater, lots of friends on the other side of the lake, there's no destination places on this site. There's, we live in a waterland, and there's nowhere to enjoy it, everything's been tore down and built condominiums. We don't have any new places, like she said. All the restaurants, I've been here 30 years, all the restaurants are gone, we're down to a handful. They said we're out of liquor licenses, won't give one that's always had one, which always had a license the whole time we're here. How do we have, are we out of liquor licenses when all the restaurants and bars are closed? We only have two. So we need places like this. This is a lake, we go down to Florida, we go places where you can enjoy the water. The public cannot enjoy the water here. The people from the other side of the lake cannot come here on boats and enjoy the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to make a comment? All right, Ellis, one more time, anybody else in the gentleman in the back?
Hello, my name's George Colson, live on 7352 Ed Lane Road. And several people talked about the noise from the boats. Has anybody done a study that, on the level of noise at Munchie Bay, that a lot of these folks have to endure in their backyard? What is that level? And extrapolate it out, once you add all these other boats, and all their buddies that come see them, and what's that noise level going to be? I can tell you right now that there's a restaurant that just opened up, reopened not too long, I think it used to be called the Sand Bar, and Saturday night, when they start playing, you know, they stop with their explosive, that's cool and all, but from the minute they start to the minute they quit, you can't hear any wildlife. And I like some of the music they play, but I don't want it just drowned out. When we're talking about a little bit of band, we're not talking about a big venue, you know, so that's just some concerns. That's it.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
It's called the rocks now?
Yeah.
Is it outdoor entertainment there?
Well, I heard a band, so I assumed it was outside. Does anybody know?
Couple times.
Last Saturday night, there was one out there.
Okay, thank you for that information, sorry to interrupt.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to make a comment? Okay, one more time, guys, who would like to come forward to make a public comment? I see no hands. So I am going to turn to the planning commission members. As, you know, we have our packets and our review that's been provided to us, we have items that have been covered in that review, we have responses. I don't have responses in writing from the applicant, as far as I know, in response to that review letter. We've seen it here. So with that, if anybody has questions, you also know our options as far as the public hearing. And this is one of those projects that we've, a couple of hearings have been here in open for, what is it now, like six months? Is that where I at?
Six months, February was the first meeting, yes.
So I guess I'll go with planning commission members, any questions?
I've got some questions. For the overnight dockage, and how long would they stay? Because I do think people drive up and park there, and I think that's going to cause a problem. Is there any guarantee, anything you can do to stipulate that they can't do that?
In our, we did have it posted, we didn't get too much detail on that. I mean, typically, I would say that people would come for a weekend, a Friday night or a Saturday night. There are some places that have a maximum stay for transient marinas that would exceed. There's certain marinas I've been to where have a maximum stay of 15 days, or five days, or three days, depends where you go. Mackinac, I think it's four days, but three or four days. So it depends. You know, our case is, we don't want, we're not looking for monthly renters that do their cars. So if someone comes from up north, they may stay a long week. It depends on if there's enough entertainment to keep someone busy in the area for that.
You're looking for a waiver on parking with the boats. So if a guy comes--
We're looking for--
And says, "We're looking for a car."
Be treated as a transient, as a transient marina, where it's more or less parking for the day, or even for the night, not for a month.
For the boat. We don't want a seasonal--
Understand.
Because that takes up parking spots that we don't have to give away. So when we have transient boaters, they're not bringing their car, but maybe a friend comes, but that would be one of the people who use the restaurant or something like that. We don't want their cars staying overnight, you know, those kinds of things, so that it's not the plan. Customers are not going to be able to go to the restaurant and stick their cars overnight or sleep in their cars. You know, they can stay on their boats, you know, and when boaters go to a destination, you know, they'll go and bring their supplies, you know, food or whatnot, their shampoo, you know, things like that, showering boat, those kinds of things. So we're going to be policing--
As long as the cars couldn't stay overnight.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want cars staying there taking up our valuable spots. We don't want people meeting people there. We know that some people want to try and do that, but we're going to be on top of that, you know, in terms of, because we have limited spots.
I just--
You know, it's a difficult thing to police. I mean, we have friends that have multiple restaurants on the lake, and we probably, you know, three or four different companies that own restaurants on the lake, and it's a full-time job, we police that, because, you know, it'd be bumpers or cruise-in, or you know, Browns, there are going to be that case where someone wants to drop that car off and jump on a boat. So it's a matter of police, you got to watch it. They have staff out there, especially on those days, on Saturday afternoons, and Saturday watching people, where they're going, and, you know, obviously, they're not allowing coolers walking down, you know, to the docks or what.
And we're going to know whose boats are whose boats, we're going to get to know everybody, and we're going to know who's coming in, and we're going to know whose cars are coming in. If there's a car there overnight, we're going to be keeping an eye on who's doing the walk of shame, you know.
So what are your specific plans for the transient marina? What hours are you proposing to us?
Well, we posted that the transient marina would be managed from approximately 11:00 AM till 7:00 PM at night. And that's where someone would be there to lock those people in, to collect, you know, sign them in, probably form, sign in form, and collect the funds if there's--
Well, nobody ever said--
Well, our restaurant would be open, you know, serving food and so on, but in terms of having someone working a desk, you know, type of thing, specific for that, a harbor master, good point, you know.
Yeah, that would determine, I don't know if we can hit the traction, you know, if there actually is a need for it.
Are you going to have a charge for the transient boats? Not daily, or weekly, or daily?
We actually see that maybe evolving on itself. We don't think there's going to be attraction for an overnight stay at first, for long periods, if there's an event. Then we may do something. If we provide electric and water, there'll be maybe a charge. So first, obviously, you're just getting started, we want to track business to the restaurant. And we may also put certain areas that will be dedicated to overnight stay.
Are you going to put out a notification that will be no overnight parking of vehicles?
Well, that's available, yeah, we could do that, we wouldn't do that.
I'm no longer versed in the art of simulation, and so I tried to look at Synchro and what they did for us in the traffic study. If I read this correctly, they want me to think of that as a spreadsheet that can be updated every second. But it is not a simulation that is run as the traffic moves with the transient traffic that goes into your facility coming in. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the joint lot?
No, I'm talking about the simulation of Synchro. Synchro is a traffic study that was used to tell us what's going on. And when I looked at that, they advised people to use Synchro slash Sim, and I presumed it stands for simulation. And I, unfortunately, looked at my simulation manual this afternoon, and I am no longer able to write these things, but I would envision, if you have a traffic study, as I had in a manufacturing system, you need a continuous flow of what you have coming and what is going, entering into that flow. And I don't see that as being done, or having been done, because somewhere in the study it says it's a .3-second delay for turning that into your driveway. I remember when they fixed the bridge going into Sassy Marine, and I had occasion to go there, I can guarantee, when that bridge had a red light, as you will when you close the parking lot, it took me longer than three seconds to understand that I couldn't turn, and then I had to wait to turn. I am definitely concerned with your attempt to limit parking when the lot is full. I don't know what that will do to the right turns, the left turns, and I don't think that was part of the traffic study. So I believe that the traffic study, based upon your-- So I believe that the traffic study, based upon your determination of the traffic in and out, is not effectively shown what the traffic will look like. I would think that if you close the parking lot, that you would have to have signage so people would see that before they come to the driveway, before they attempt to turn left or right. Otherwise, there will be a big mess. And people talked about the lights. There's a continuous flow. That's true. But also, you will get spurts of three, five, seven cars coming through Palms Drive and through the ferry crossing. And when they come from Palms Road, you can't make a left turn. If they happen to also come from the ferry across here, they can't make a left turn. That backs up traffic. And so you are creating, I believe, with 106 parking lots and the study that we got from Wayne, whoever they are, that that is not an effective study that has explained to me how you can handle the traffic when you close it, when you have to close it, the signage that would be required. And if there were a red light with an arrow indicating, hey, the parking lot is closed so that the people know before they get to the driveway. I am concerned with the congestion that we may create at the driveway.
Well, one thing I want to say, you know, Joe and I aren't traffic experts. And we're not a traffic engineer. Obviously, Highway Trims is well respected in the traffic. And they do their studies and they have their engineers and they have their policies. They do, everything's done on the peak end. Everything's done on peak traffic. Every study's looked at peak, it looked at peak hours, peak, peak time used. Those guys have a system and it's pretty well thought out. It's explained to us as best they can. They deal with them directly as, as Sir, sure, your.
Traffic consultant.
Your traffic team has done many times their own different.
I understand that they're experts. And as I indicated, I'm no longer versed in the art of simulation. We did that about 35 years ago, so I don't.
Yeah, and we're not experts on traffic either. We are actually higher experts. Yeah, I have to review that.
At a blocked driveway with people coming from the left and from the right to make a turn into that driveway on that traffic situation without a left turn lane and/or an entranceway. I believe that that will not be sufficient to maintain the traffic flow. And I would request that perhaps you'd ask the Wayne to look at a more continuous flow rather than a discrete, discrete flow. Because I presume this is when looking at the introduction to Syncro.
Why would you like to talk to the traffic consultant from who was recommended?
No, I think that that is beyond my scope. I think what you have to do is tell them that when you look at the traffic study, for example, you say 34 in, 34 out. What you need to look at is 60 in, 20 out. 20 out, 60 in. How does that impact that requirement as they indicated is not needed with regards to left turn and a light? I, I have traveled that road. And as I said, I made the entrance and exit into Sassy Marina when that bridge was closed. That's what concerns me when you close the parking lot.
Well, I think one of the things that I think Mark brought up some time ago that he had some experience with, with parking and whatnot. When Rod brought up what's going to happen when the lots fall. This was quite a few meetings ago. He said he puts a sign out front, lot fall, with an arrow in that. That was pretty much it. Is that not what was said? You know, we're not going to have, you know, we're not going to allow them to come into the, to the restaurant and then tell them it's full and send them out. We're going to put something at the street and we'll have to man that and make sure that that's right. We don't want to have trouble and congestion getting in any more than Bobby Max does, who is actually a bigger restaurant than we are. We don't want to have a problem with cars coming in and out. I don't know if they're having problems with it. But according to MDOT and according to the consulting list that they gave us and the person that we hired and they worked with Giffords, the numbers are what the numbers are. And unlike you, I'm not really following the synchronicity of everything. But they're saying this is what a restaurant does. This is how many turns it does, how many left turns, right turns. And then they take into effect the actual traffic counts that were done, which way they were going. This, there's, there's less cars going this way at 5:00 than there are going this way.
That's right.
You know, so they add all that in. And that's why they get percentages of how many turns are coming left and how many turns are turning.
And I'm coming to a wedding at 6:30 in the afternoon. And I'm the minister for that wedding and I can't come into your parking lot. What are you going to tell me? I'm just asking. That's my problem. As I see it, when you have to close the parking lot and you indicated that you were going to put that into the contracts, that you are limiting the parking to the people who want to come in there. I am still concerned that we have 223 numbers coming to event area one or 423 people coming to event number one. By the time you talk about 423 people coming to a wedding, not too many people can come to the wedding.
It's 106 cars. I mean, you're still limited by the 106.
That's why, and that's why you have the problem at that entrance. And when you indicate to me in the study, the study is based on existing conditions. We have no existing conditions into the driveway. So how can we, these are all estimates, right?
The existing conditions.
Predictions by you.
That's the study of traffic. I understand.
It's not by us. We didn't do the study. Way, Highway Trims says this is what, this is how they do them for all the restaurants. They count what the traffic is at their location. So even when a new restaurant's going in down the road or whatever, they count the traffic and they project what the numbers will be based on their experience.
They have a system, the way they track traffic. And I don't know it. We don't know it. They have a way, but I've not approved the traffic studies.
I understand that.
They approved it, so.
Okay, okay. Based on the scenario that Wayne has put forth and a worst-case scenario, as we discussed, the traffic coming in and in and out, what would be your countermeasures to prevent any difficulties?
Well, one of the things we're going to do is we have the approval from MDOT with the permit is we're going to actually raise our approach slightly, giving a better perch angle both ways to see in and out. So it's going to be a little, little higher up with a cap over the top of that. You know, I've pulled in and out of that for over two years since we bought it. And I have not had any problems looking left. My wife's car is a shorter car. I have no problems looking left and seeing what's coming in and out of there. And I've gone all kinds of times, day and night, rush hour, non-rush hour. I've been out there all the time. And I haven't got any problems.
So what is your solution?
So what we're going to do is we're going to raise up the approach slightly. So we have a little higher cap on top. Flat area where you can see both left and right.
And what kind of indicators are you going to have the lot is full? And to control the traffic coming in and out?
I think what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to adopt, you know, one of the things that you said in the meeting. And we're going to do a lot full sign at the road. One of the things we're looking at is using our signage and having a way to put something on the signage, you know, if something happens that way. As well as have someone out at the.
Do we need to see that plan in writing?
What was that?
Do we do this? Do we need to see his plan in writing?
Marquee up there.
Definitely. I would like to see exactly what you propose to alleviate any condition when you have closed the lot. And I, I heard here and I've looked at it. Whenever I drive towards New Baltimore, there's a store with fewer parking spots than you have. And they have to have a left turn lane. I am concerned that MDOT may not have, or Way Trims may not have looked at all of the conditions appropriately between 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. when you have a full house. The full house concerns me. It's too bad that we couldn't use off-site parking, to be honest with you.
Well, you know, Whitey, as Brian spoke of, they do it on the max, you know, numbers when they do their turns. And I understand your concerns. You know, we want to try to, you know, take care of everything. We want to make sure it's an easy in and out. Would it be nice to have a five-lane road there? You know, great. You know, if, if things work out, you know, down the road, you know, and we have to take a look at other options, then we'll, we want to make sure things work well. So, I mean, what does that mean specifically? You know, we're trying to problem solve and do the best we can. I don't want all kinds of trouble getting out. I don't want boats causing trouble for neighbors. I want to make sure things are run smooth. And these are max, max, max capacities. Most weddings aren't 400 people. Everybody's all scared about that. You know, most weddings are under 200, you know. And, you know, what we're looking at is, you know, we have the space. It's four, four plus acres. You know, the space is there. So to say that you can only have 10 people here or you got to make it real small. If we do get a nice wedding, you know, great. That enables us to make the money. So we're not one of the restaurants that's going out of business. Okay? We want to be able to do other things that we can do charitable, things like that, events. And so that's why, you know, we need to be able to hit the capacities that are allowable, which are under the site plan ordinances amounts. That's why the restaurant says it's a bigger number based on what your ordinances allow per the square footage, but the parking number is lower and that's what's on the site plan.
No, I, I understand the parking and how it was configured. And it has to do with the occupancy and all the other good stuff because of the number of square feet that you have there. I understand that. And I understand that you can't put a lot more parking spots there. And that's okay. I am only worried about when you close that driveway to entrances and when people try to come there and try to make left and right turns and what's going to happen at that intersection. And that's my only concern.
Well, we will, you know, put together a plan. I hope that doesn't delay everything. But we will put together something in place which would include, you know, one of Mark's suggestions, as well as a man, a man at the location, you know, in terms of on a big event. You know, if the lot's full, we're going to have somebody out there directing traffic. If, if cars leave, you know, then the sign can come up. Someone will be there making sure in terms of what's going on with parking. We don't want cars coming in and having to turn around and run out.
But you can.
Right. I mean, we do have a huge driveway by the restaurant, but we don't, we don't want to do that. So we're going to, we're going to actively make sure we take care of that.
Have you considered an automatic count and a sign that comes on and off?
Well, that would be nice. I mean, we'd love to have.
I don't know what it costs. I have no clue.
I think that's sound like control.
All right, we're going to move on from this. I think we have the general idea of we still have concerns of parking or the entrance into or out of M29 into this facility. I'm just going to hit a couple of points right now. I do have a question for clarification. It says that the destination will include a restaurant, a swim-up pool bar quote pool area. Could you clarify what you're talking about?
Which, which is your question?
A swim-up pool bar pool area. Are you talking just to the pool or?
There'd be a pool, pool area, the fenced-in area, which is, that surrounds the pool, chase lounges. And then the pool itself would actually be a swimming pool, about 2,000 square feet.
With a bar in it?
With a bar area in it, yes. They, we've talked to DEQ and they've, they've, they have approved the, DEQ in the state of Michigan manages pools, commercial pools. In some, in some states, it's health, health department. And in Michigan, it's DEQ. DEQ advised us that we're able to build this bar in the location as it's, as it's designed. We may, we will not serve alcohol in, in the bar or in the pool until it's been approved. We've got, we've got politicians working on changing that, making adjustments for that.
Right now, this is what you're requesting?
Right now, we request the design of the pool be approved by DEQ. They approve, they approve the design as it sits. And instead of a bar area where it would be serving liquor, it could be, it could be a table area. But leave the bar as designed as they feel optimistic that they can.
Leave the space in the pool. And then you could have chairs in there, people sitting in there. But not serving.
Until all the law will change.
Second question. Hours of operation for outdoor dining and live entertainment. If you, so get that. What, I think at one point in this many pages of documents, I saw a comment from the applicants, we'll just follow the rules. What are you looking for if you have a grant of that?
I didn't, I didn't catch that last part of that, I'm sorry.
Hours of operation for outdoor dining and live entertainment. If you're approved to do that, I believe in many of these seminals, there's somewhere that says you're just going to follow whatever the rules are. What are you looking for if that is granted?
The, the outdoor entertainment, we, we put a schedule in, I believe. In the restaurant, we open bar hours, which would be Michigan liquor license, indoors. Outdoors will follow no exemptions and be till 11:00, 11:00 p.m. Well, I believe, I believe it's.
And I guess my final comment, because I could go through a lot of this. But at this particular point, we've gone, as you've mentioned, through quite a few reviews. We still have this public hearing open. From my perspective, we still have a lot of discrepancies between all these seminals that we've been going through. I personally am finding it very difficult to follow, whether it's a site plan, whether it's a last seminal from the DEQ. I would think it would make more sense, considering we have this fourth review now. We have all these concerns, some of which have been addressed. I need you to your PowerPoint. But us as a planning commission don't have in front of us, without trying to hodgepodge all this together, a very clear concise picture of what we are actually asking for. And that's just my report. Any other questions?
Can, can I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
To say that I'm frustrated is putting it very mildly. When I got this and I had to dig through 101 pages to figure out what you were trying to talk about, is ridiculous. This is your project, not ours. It's up to you to give us the information of what you want, not for us to tell you what you want. You're saying you're frustrated because we keep making you come back. This is why you keep coming back.
As we noted, that was a request from the planning.
It still doesn't answer our questions.
But Christine, you know, and I apologize if you're having frustration, definitely. I don't want to do that, okay? I was frustrated being asked to give all my transpondence with the Army Corps and going out and copying 150 pages times 15 pages. But that's what I was requested for.
Where were you requesting that from?
From Giffords. They wanted all correspondence.
It was in the scope. It was the last.
It was in the scope.
Every transmission.
Okay, this is going back to, there seems to be a theme with this whole project that we are trying very hard, planning commission members, to follow this along with Gifford Webster, who works for the township and is paid by the township, to analyze what they give us and analyze what you give us. But at this particular point, I don't know how anybody can possibly think we're going to follow this and not inadvertently, whether it's the numbers that don't match for the number of people, the total parking spots or my hours of operation. It is extremely difficult. And the theme seems to be, well, Gifford said this and Gifford said that. Or then you don't understand because the planning commission wasn't clear. So we're trying very hard to make this happen, to figure out what you're looking for. But I've got to say, this is extremely difficult to follow. So we are still in a public hearing. We have options that we've exercised to keep open the public hearing, which is now up to about a system period. I, at this point, feel we still have outstanding difficulty. I'm looking for an answer how to get us on the same page because I don't think we're on the same page.
I mean, the number for the pool, you've got 456 people listed. The floor plan indicates the pool area has a maximum capacity of 456. The traffic study and the site plan show a maximum capacity of 223. Which is it? That's a whole lot of people.
The difference is the square footage of the area versus the parking lot. There's parking, there's a parking, there's, there's two different. What is building code for the area, square foot, per person, per acre? We have, we have, a board member asked us to lay that.
I believe it was Thomas.
Asked us to lay out a description of what the building code would be for those same square footages. And we also have parking constraints. So those are two diff, I agree that there are two different numbers and the confliction is confusing. There are two different buildings. There's a building code. Of course, we're restricted by a parking. by a parking lot.
But Thomas asked to have what the actual space required in one of the meetings, so that's why we put it on the sheet. And as far as the actual scope, okay, from Giffords, that is, has Rod's name on here, and your name, Kathy, and my name on this sheet here, it says here, provide copy of transmittal and any response received from the U.S. Army Corps to the township. And that's what we did. And you got a copy of this through your email, and Rod, Rod approved this on July 29th.
You could, Laura, have a response, Rod, please do so.
Let's, let's read the entire bullet point, because the bullet point says boat traffic projections and current site plan to be submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for review and comment. Please provide a copy of the transmittal and the response received.
And any response.
Stop. Please stop, let me finish.
So the boat traffic projections and the current site plan were to be sent to the Army Corps, provide transmittal so that we know that you actually did that, and whatever response they received. That does not mean that you dump every single email that you have to necessarily provide when you never really provided the summary of the boat traffic. So you, it says right here, anticipated boat traffic assumptions of operations based on the current site plan, which includes restaurant and outdoor pool and private event area, include anticipated weekday peak hour traffic and weekend peak hour, peak day traffic. That was never provided. That, that's what we referred to earlier as information that was missing. And then we just wanted to see that you actually sent that to the Army Corps, and that they responded, yes, we received it, and here's our comments. That was the essence of what was being requested as part of the submittal.
So it was misunderstood. We said any transmittal, we provide you all.
That was a misunderstanding, but I guess our point earlier was that all this information wasn't necessarily provided, and apparently you may have misunderstood what we meant by that, but that's the clarification.
But how do we get past the miscommunication that seems to be the theory since January? Yes, since January, that seems to be permeating this particular project, because I think on all levels, we're all wondering how, because we can do this for another six months. It's not an answer. It's absolutely not the answer. It's not fair to the community, it's not fair to anybody sitting in this board and/or to the applicants. We need to figure out, without doing one of the other options that we have to do, how do we get to that point where we can look at a very clear, concise answer to our questions that I don't really think have been difficult?
For example, one of the things that we brought was the floor plan.
Yeah.
I think the clear solution to that is that the floor plan should be amended to state exactly what the occupancy they're requesting.
Thank you, yes.
Okay? That way, there's no discrepancy. So the floor plan says it's gonna be X number, that's gonna match up with your traffic study, it's gonna match up, match up with everything else. Everything will be the same. And I think that's just a simple amendment to the floor plan to reflect those numbers. This is, these are the numbers in these different areas of the floor plan. These are the maximum capacities that we're going to permit as part of our proposal. And then I think all these numbers will align then. So there's, there's some simple things that can be done, because otherwise, when they're, when they're not aligning, five years from now, if this project's approved, and somebody comes back and says, oh, we've got a problem or violation, someone's gonna pull one sheet out that says you can have 500 and something people, and someone else can pull out another one, and there's gonna be confusion, and we don't want that. We want everybody to be treated equally and fairly and based on the same set of assumptions.
And that's what we're trying to do, it's just because it's extremely difficult to get there.
Right.
So I'm looking for a solution to get us there, because to do another six months of going back and forth is not gonna work. This just doesn't make any sense.
Right.
I think probably we gotta start with, we need a complete altogether site plan with numbers matching from the applicant, because it's our project. What do you want us to look at? What do you want us to approve or request?
Kathy, I'm sorry if there's any frustration. We're, we're very frustrated as well, and I, I apologize. You know, we were told in a meeting by one of the board members that he wanted something on the restaurant. That's what we did. We can change it back, but that's what we were told, so we ran and did it.
I think the problem, though, is becoming, you're, you're, you're taking one thing, and then everything else kind of falls apart. And I don't know how much clearer I'm writing what Rod just read, one prime example of the boat study and all that. Somehow, we end up with this huge packet of emails. That's what I'm trying to avoid, because I cannot imagine from an applicant's point of view, you guys must be super frustrated. I get that, and that's not what we're trying to do. So we need to figure out how to get past this point.
Yeah. We can change, we can change the number back off of that number, which shows what the square footage would actually allow to what the actual parking number allows, which is what we originally had. That's an easy fix. As far as the emails, you know, I'm sorry, it took a lot of time for me to do all that, and when I read any response, that's what it told me to do. My bad. You know, we did contact, email to find out about the extra copies. Do I need to make a 12-page copy times 15? Or we just made a small change on the curb, can we just change those three sheets? The email was sent back to us saying that it is preferred to have a full set, and then later said, and I have a copied email here, it was later said to do it. So that's what we did. Now, if you want me to run up, you know, I'll, I'll run out, make 15 copies of the new page with the new number on it, and then that should be.
Let me, let me stop you there. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I see we're going the wrong direction again. And I'm just gonna talk out loud, and I'm looking for the planners at this particular point, because you have to also follow the rules and procedures that are in place. Everything needs to go to the building department, who then disperses it in the order that is set up under our rules. And that's how it has to happen. You can't just submit them directly to the planner. I'm just saying, anything from, I think that we've been very, very clear about that. So with that in mind, how, to a clean package, Rod or whoever from planners, how, and I'm almost gonna say, at this particular point, I believe we need to have this somehow in a black and white format, because he said this, or she said that, or an email. Emails can be very deceiving, I guess, at times, I'll give you that. So how do we get to that point? I'm open to his questions.
Question? Can?
I don't want a question, I want.
Well, I know.
Okay, go for it.
If only one or two sheets change, can there be a nice old stamp that says this replaces sheet A, B, C, D, E, of such and such a date? Throw it out and put that in there? I don't know. Is that acceptable?
I find that dangerous.
I think that's difficult at this point.
Well, yeah, no, at this point, but is that, in general, acceptable to do?
Generally, people, when you're dealing with planning commission and packets, generally there's a complete submittal.
Every time?
I would say in most instances, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think the thing that I would try to do is focus on information that you wanna see that you haven't seen, or something that needs to be adjusted. So maybe we can tick through as many of those. One possibility, if you, do you wanna go through that now, or do you wanna try to see if we can work between maybe the chair and the applicant and us trying to come up with a list of all of the information that needs to be there, and issues that need to be resolved, and then try to come to an agreement so everybody's on the same page? That's the one suggestion of a way we might approach it, so that they are hopefully clear and were clear on what's expected. That's one approach. One, one other would be to sit here and try to go through it right now, and go one item.
Probably not, because we've also received a lot more input from the public, again, maybe a couple of topics that we maybe did not think about. But I'm also concerned if there's a way to facilitate the rest of the members of this board, because you and I and the applicant, I can miss something. I mean, I've taken notes, I'm trying to. Is there a legal way to have them, without having another meeting, to not keep delaying this process, have the board members submit their questions that maybe are contained?
You can, you can submit questions through the building department that would then be available for anyone to see.
Perfect.
Okay? They should not be done by emails between.
No, 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 no.
You could submit informational requests that you think are appropriate based on the zoning ordinance requirements. Send that through to the building department through Cindy, and then she could provide that, and then that could be part of what everybody reviews when we get together and discuss this with the applicant, whether it's by phone, email, meeting, or what have you, to get that list together, so everybody's on the same page in terms of what they need to do. So maybe we give everybody a week to provide those questions, or what, five days, whatever you think is reasonable. They could submit those through to the building department, so that that's all available for anyone to see. And that, the new list would be put together. Whatever that request is, that would also be available for public inspection, because that's what we're going over in the open.
Oh, absolutely. Everything needs to be out in the open.
And then, then the applicant would prepare that new, new submittal with all that information, and hopefully that would resolve your informational requirements.
What is the floor plan?
If it is one week with that, when would the next meeting be on those points then? Because normally, we have a week.
You'd have to then resubmit, so it would likely be your December meet.
December 11.
Which is earlier than normal.
December 11.
It's December 11.
December 11.
So when would that be due, my portion then?
We haven't quite got there yet, just told us.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
November 20th.
November 20th would be the submittal deadline.
And submittals all need to go through, again, the building department, the power procedures.
Correct. So, it's a week from today.
Is October 30th.
So October 30th, we have all the questions, and then we allow for another five or five to seven days to agree on exactly all the missing information. Then they still have time to prepare that and submit by November 20th. I think we're still, I think we're good.
So 10:30 would be any board members who have additional questions submitted to Cindy and the building department. That would be 10, by 10:30 at the close of business. Then, what's your proposal?
Then, we would, we would review that, and then we try to agree on what we think is the list that could then be provided to the applicant, and if they had questions, then they would get back in touch with us, make sure everybody's on the same page, and then they can proceed with preparing their response.
And where in that would you propose if we do this? Someone from the planning commission, you and the applicant, maybe have a face-to-face in the same room?
If it's necessary, yes. Yeah, absolutely. If, if, maybe that's, maybe that's, I have.
I'd like to do that if we could.
Sure.
So for sure, that we have right now, board members need to get whatever you want to, and by December 30th?
October.
Excuse me. How are we? Okay.
Is somebody going to review it so we don't duplicate, duplicate before it goes out? Is that gonna be?
I'm su, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, five of us have.
Oh, yeah, 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 she'll, she'll narrow it. If there's duplicate questions, she's not going to.
Okay.
So we got that part of it. Giffords and Webster will review that. They made a PowerPoint presentation tonight. Do you have that?
Do not.
You need to provide that.
They downloaded it.
Oh, we have? So we, so we, okay, so yeah, we have.
It's on your laptop, so, because that did entail answering.
Yeah, that's helpful, we'll look at that.
Okay, so we have.
Can we look at that?
I'm sorry. I think you're simply, that's, you're officially providing that, correct?
Yeah, yes.
And we can, we can, now that we have it, we can email it to.
Perfect.
It's October 30th.
Okay, look at that. And there's the new DEQ stuff that Kate and I, none of us, none of us have saw.
Yeah, I really looked at it.
No, we don't have that.
I just kinda looked through it, I just thought it was. I don't believe she did.
Yeah, I just, we just got an email late this afternoon, so we certainly.
You got a letter from DEQ?
Got your permit and whatever was part of your application. There was a bunch of material.
I thought we.
Cindy has it now, it's all been, it's all been emailed to Cindy. It came in, it's late, late this afternoon, I think 5 o'clock or 5:30.
I thought it was submitted, I thought.
It's probably all stuff you've seen.
It's all stacked. I thought we, I thought it was stacked.
Okay, so.
So what you think of me, a complete submittal? Are we doing, we wanna see licenses all over again? You wanna see everything all over again?
I, I think they're looking to see the whole package.
I mean, you wanna see the DEQ license reprinted, yeah.
We're gonna talk about, like, for example, all those emails. We're gonna talk about how we can consolidate that, so we can do something.
We're not trying to.
Yeah, we're, we're not trying to make you duplicate a bunch of paper that's unnecessary.
We provide what you need.
Well, we'll mean, we'll mean, we'll mean, whatever.
Sometime after the 30th.
Sometime after.
And we'll figure that out soon.
And how, should I contact through Matt then?
Contact through, probably through Cindy. Well, we can, you'll be set up, you, yeah, you can email us and keep Kathy, Kathy, Cindy, and Matt, and myself all in the loop. That way, we're all.
Because I, I personally think it would make more sense to put us all in the same room at this point.
I think so, too.
Just to clarify, 10:30, board members ask questions, and what day do you think you'll have consolidated? There'll be a meeting sometime after that?
Yeah, we have to obviously check our schedules and figure that out. We're hoping sometime within a week after that to be able to.
We've got about.
So that'll make 10:30, that'll make till November 7th, and then we have till the 20th to submit our answers.
Yeah, so it'll give you almost two weeks to pull your stuff together.
The 6th is.
That's, that's, we're happy with that, as long as we.
That's it, three days.
I know Tom. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna open it up.
No, I just wanna ask a question. It, it sounds to me like there's gonna be a closed meeting that's not open to the public going on.
No, it's not closed.
No.
Sounds like it.
We are not trying to hide anything from anybody. We want to have it all out there, and we very much value everybody's input, whether it's security, whether it's planners. We just need to, if you haven't noticed, this project, I'm gonna keep using the word theme, we have to get past that, and we're not going to if we don't do something more persistent, I guess, organized. I'm not sure what the correct terminology is. That's why I'm asking for the input from Rod and everybody else who's sitting here, so. But no, it is going to be above board, everything's gonna be out there for the public to see.
And you're posting the questions. And you're posting the questions.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not, that's not private?
It's private. Okay, so with that, no. We're gonna have to do another motion to postpone. And that's with the, so, should we wait for Tom to come back? I'm sorry, he left. Hold on a second. We've been going at this for a while.
That would be the site plan.
We're waiting for you to come back. What do we do about?
It's emotional.
Wait a second. Are you ready?
Date of the meeting, site plan consideration. Let's get the right sheet here. And this is a, has to be site. Okay.
So we need to make motion.
Move to continue the site plan public hearing for the special to event use at 7317 Dyke Road.
That's good enough.
Until.
It should be to, to the December meeting, if that's, if that's what you're keeping the public here open.
December 12, or December 11, excuse me.
December 11.
Extend.
Yep.
19. I made that motion then.
Any discussion?
Edward Keller, excused. Randy Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Payne. Mark Porshart.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Griesling.
He's absent.
Absent. And Kathy Schweitzer.
Yes, okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this particular point, if anyone chooses to leave because the board still has another five or six items to continue with, I want to say a few dots in our file and then we'll continue on with our agenda items, okay? Thank you for typing in.
Thank you.
Do not get his cap.
All right there, and then where are they going to turn around?
I can't.
Then they're going to go down Main Street Drive and they're going to go through that parking lot and turn around.
Remember, public.
But after.
Sir. I owe you one. Okay, I'm going to continue on with the agenda. Thanks for that, if you needed it. Ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am, in the back, the purple jacket standing there, please. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to go to item number seven, unfinished business. I see no unfinished business that we're going to address tonight, correct? Item number eight, planning consultants report.
Well, just briefly, at the end of the meeting, we would like to take a picture of the planning commission. It is community planning.
Who's leaving now?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got to get, we got to get, hold on. Get Keith back in.
He's out there.
I'm sorry.
Keith!
Keith, come back here.
Keith!
Get Keith back in.
Keith! And sit in my seat. It is.
Move me again?
No, not your side.
Still at the table.
Are you supposed to make an ocean reading?
Yes, come on, we're not going to keep moving, let's. Okay, is that unfinished business, Keith, number seven, there was nine, brought in, the number eight, planning consultants report.
It is community planning month, so we would like to take a picture, taking pictures of our planning commissions as part of that celebration because of all the great things you do. We have a little, a brief little overview of what we're going to do about, I guess we brought with us as part of community planning.
Is that what we do? Is that what you're doing?
You're going to be doing it in just a few minutes.
Really?
It's your date tonight, boy.
And a reminder that on, I'll get my date right.
You set the master plan open house for November 13th, which is also the day of your leaving in November.
But you're doing on the island?
Island first, so that's going to be at, we think it's going to be, we're still finalizing times, we think that'll be 3:00 to 4:30 on the island.
With the lions.
And 5:30 to 7:00 here and then your meeting will be after that open house.
5:30 to 6:45.
Have you called anybody at the Lions Hall coming?
That's all been, yes.
November 13th.
We, that was originally, we found out tonight though that we weren't sure if you would have to have a meeting that night, so now that you're at the meeting, I may have to dispute those dates. We'll finalize that. You already, all right, if you guys don't have a problem with starting your meeting a little bit later, 3:30 that night only.
Do you put that in writing?
Send us an email.
Send me an email, but they'll be writing. All right.
No, but I think we need to make sure we post that too.
That would have to be posted at a different time, yeah, at least 18 hours in advance, then that will, that will be done. And then the other thing I want you to be aware of, if you don't already know about it, is that on Monday, it's coming Monday.
Turkey sandwich.
Yeah, you can get a free sandwich, I don't know if it's free in that. St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Workshop.
Good Old Spark. Good Old Spark.
Good Old Spark. I hope a lot of you will come there. I will be there.
When is it?
Matt will be there.
Monday.
And we're going to be talking all about site planning, so.
I'm scheduled.
I was supposed to be.
Forget the turkey sandwich.
I see Cindy is in the back, Cindy Gavish. Can you come forward for just a second?
Are you driving? How about your sofa?
As far as November 13th.
Yep.
Because of the timing with the open houses, we would like to start this half hour.
I already sent an email.
Thank you.
That's how I remember, I just send an email.
All right, are you done?
So, yeah, so that, we're going to start the Harson's Island at 3:00, we're going to start the one on the main one at 6:00 and then your meeting is going to be at 7:00.
And if any of us can attend, we will, but.
Please do, we would like to see as many planning commissioners at these open houses as possible.
On the island?
On both.
You did it during the day, so.
I can be the one at 3:00.
That would be very helpful just to have this made, so show force is always great.
Will you send out an email reminder?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to have a public notice too, right?
Yes.
For those meetings to put in the paper.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I move on to item number nine?
Would be video?
Item number nine, ZDA representatives report.
There was one appeal, I believe the address is 6403 Dyke Road. It was a re-appeal, if you'll remember back in November, I'm sorry, back in June, we had a gentleman that requested a variance to build a boathouse on a non-conforming lot. There was no, no house on the lot. He re-appealed, he has documentation from the DEQ to allow a larger well and of course they've approved the boathouse not knowing what our ordinances were and it was denied again based on the non-conformity of the lot. That's.
Thank you, anything else?
That's it.
Item number 10, board representatives report.
Well, the only thing I had was the master plan open house on November 13th from 3:00 to 4:30. That'd be about it, no anything discussed.
Thank you, Mark.
That was a big one, yeah.
Bring everything I can to the table.
Okay, chairperson's report is number 11. I really don't have anything to add other than there are three planning commission members who should have received a letter or.
I got my termination notice.
Well, not exactly a termination, no, it's.
You can reapply. I had my package.
We'll get that, you don't have to reapply, do you? We got that in the wrong package, maybe you can get that back to Cindy so she can get that to where it goes. Sorry about that, but there's, I think it's Robert, Christine and who was the other one?
Keith.
Keith. Well, come back, Keith. So you know what you need to do to take care of that? Yes, you do.
Just ignore it?
Call Artie.
Artie was here, you talked to him. All right, that's all I have. Number 12, planning commission member comments.
I've got a question. Rod, you know, where this, where this location, where this is going, it's really close to Ira and we're talking all these traffic studies and all this and that and the other. Has anybody looked at Ira Township Zone and what's near that area? It's close to the border.
It is, it is. We're generally familiar with it, we have all of our information. Do you want us to share all that? We can.
I just, you know, myself, I just looked at it and, you know, that's right above Stire Drive, just north, it's, it's all commercial. Commercial all through this whole area pretty thick. I know it's Ira.
Sure.
That's contributing to the whole thing.
Maybe that's one of those questions you can submit by October 30th.
Maybe.
To the Park Channel's draft.
Ira Township planner is in our office, so we.
There you go.
I got a question for that. How could they make the Dollar General put a left-hand turn lane, which doesn't even come close to the business that this guy is projecting at 200 cars or at a wedding? And how did MDOT pass that? I mean, they made them put the left-hand turn lane.
It wasn't part of the zoning review. Yeah, that was, it's part of the site plan review that that happened. I, I don't know what MDOT's information was for that, so I can't tell you, I don't know what they reviewed.
Do you know whether this is a discrete study simulation or just a static?
The way the synchro model works is you input the peak hour traffic by direction, by turn movement. You put in the information about the dimensions of the number of lanes and you put in assumptions about the way traffic platoons and arrives and it will calculate forecast of delay and levels of service. And it's the way traffic, most studies are used synchro as part of the capacity analysis and that can in fact do a simulation, which is SEM traffic, which actually animates and shows how that, how that all operates, so.
So it is a continuous simulation of the traffic?
If it's built as the model, yes, it will do that and you can actually build a network.
Do we know whether they use that model to that extent?
I know they, they use the software to calculate the delay, yes. So I know they use, that's what they use, they said they use.
But based on the information and the traffic flow in and out of the site that was projected?
Right, they actually counted in front of the site and then projected their own traffic on top. So they did new counts in front of the site in August for the rest, yeah.
Did they consider Rosemarines traffic coming in and out of that building?
Yes, they did, because they had a, they, the way they did the count was they mounted a camera above.
I saw that.
And that's where the counts came from, so they were able to pick up pedestrian movements and all that, they had everything.
But that Rosemarine building right there is no longer public, it's strictly employees.
There's not wild traffic coming in and out there anymore. Right.
Okay. Any more comments for the planning commission members? Hearing then we're going to go to item number 13, public comments. Anybody who wants to make a public comment? You know the routine. You're familiar, you know ours first.
Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane, and I won't bring up anything about the public hearing.
Thank you.
The, the master plan. You said that that's going to be an open house meeting? And will that be recorded?
Of course.
I don't think so. Not open house.
Because it's not, it's not like a meeting like this, it's an open house, there's stations where people can get information or go ask for questions.
It's an open house to discuss the.
It's an open house.
So is it something like for more information pertaining to the survey?
It is a way for the planning commission to get additional input from the public in terms of how they feel about the master plan, long-range planning and land use related issues and attaching.
Okay, thank you.
It's primarily a listening session, we're here to listen to the public.
Okay, great. The other thing is the videotapes of the planning meetings. I'm not sure what's going on, they are not being posted as timely as the board meetings are. The township board meetings are usually posted within, you know, a day, two days maximum after they're recorded. The planning commission meetings have been taken five to 10 days sometimes before they're posted and available to us. I don't know who's responsible for posting the videos after. I know Michael does them when he's here recording, but when they're recorded from the back, it seems like when Michael's not here doing it and they're recorded from back there, they're not being posted in a timely manner and I don't know who's responsible. I know it's new to have the, the planning and the zoning meetings recorded.
I don't have an answer for that because that's not something I know. I know they're being recorded, I know they're supposed to be posted, I don't know what the turnaround timeframe is.
So you, the planning board isn't responsible for posting the meetings? And we don't know who is?
Town show.
Town show.
Probably the supervisor.
Actually, can I ask a question only because you two are standing back there? Do you have an answer to that question?
The difference is that when our board meetings are being recorded, as soon as the board meeting is over, Artie is here and he'll go back and he'll start uploading that. So a lot of times when you guys meet on Wednesdays, on Thursdays he's uploading it. We're not open Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so if he doesn't get that completed and get that to it on Thursday, sometimes it won't be posted till the following Monday, but I can certainly mention it to him.
Sometimes it's been even longer than that, but, yeah, I appreciate it if it could be a little bit more consistent and regular to be uploaded.
But the answer is Artie's the one who does. Okay, that's your answer to that.
Everybody told me that Artie didn't have anything to do with the planning commission. Artie can't have his hands on anything to do with the planning commission.
He doesn't, he doesn't.
If you take your comments true, but not the last.
Okay, and one other thing, when Michael is here, Mr. Zorin, we can always hear all of you guys. After the public hearing was over and you guys had that conversation, if it was being recorded from the back, we wouldn't have been able to hear these guys at all. If they don't come up to the microphone, we can't hear them on the videos. I'd like to ask you to please, I know I've asked before, to be more diligent on using the microphone for when I can't always be here for meetings and there's a lot of people that do watch them from home. I've been watching, there's been 150 to 200 people watching these planning commission meetings on a pretty regular basis, but it's really difficult to hear with the microphones when they're recorded by the back. When Mr. Zorin records them, they're, they're clear, you can, you can hear them even if you don't step up to the microphone. So I don't know whether it's old equipment back there or what, but anyway, that's all I have.
We'll try to be more conscientious of it, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it, it's just that when you're not, you know, when you're not able to be here and you're trying to listen from home, you're only getting half of the conversation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, he gets one more time off.
Anybody else from the audience who wishes to make a public comment? One last call. You haven't seen any hands, go ahead, Artie.
So moved.
Second.
No, we do not. All in favor of a engagement or.